Far so good.
Is he?
Yeah.
Ready? All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of the June 5th, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone here, and we'll call the, we'll start with our opening remarks and pledge by Val J. Rigby.
I choose to give my opening remarks in the form of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to meet this evening. We're grateful for this great country we have to live in and for the blessings of freedom we enjoy. We're grateful for the opportunities to plan and prepare for our future and for the future of our children and those that will come after us. We pray for guidance and direction this evening. We pray for our country. We pray for our neighbors. We ask for these blessings in the name of our Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
You'll stand. Shall be the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the agenda for tonight?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Have you had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting on April 3rd? Is there any questions on that? If not, can I get an approval?
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the first item up tonight is the consent item for the Wyatt Christianson subdivision First Amendment. Turned time to Hugh Connor.
So this is Wyatt Christianson's first subdivision amendment. It's a request to amend the agricultural remainder and an uninvolved or a lot that's not in the subdivision. Both part properties are legal. The agricultural remainder matches the subdivision plan and the other hasn't changed since August 8th, 2006. As no new building lots are being created, there's no need for a septic feasibility letter of new water right. The access is from 800 East, which is classified as a minor local road, has an existing width of 20 feet, has a 33-foot right-of-way, no paved shoulder, no gravel shoulder, and a 10-foot clear zone. It's considered substandard as the paved shoulder, gravel shoulder material. However, there's no new building lots being created, no road improvements are required. Cash County Fire District didn't have any comments aside from if there's any development in the future, they have to go through the zoning clearance process and do that. They have to work with waste management. There's no known sensitive areas on the property. Properties were posted online, posted to three public places, and mailed to all property owners within 300 feet on May 23rd. The agenda for the meeting was posted on the county website on May 23rd as well, and at this time, no public comments been received.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, what's your thoughts?
It means everything. Issues with it.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Motion to recommend for approval?
With the three, three conditions and two conclusions?
With the three conditions and two conclusions.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing for the funk 160-acre Richmond gravel pit rezone.
So this is a request to rezone 160 acres from the agricultural zones to the industrial zone, including the mineral extraction overlay. There's a little bit of history. In February 2025, this parcel was involved in a rezone that aimed to rezone 286 acres from the industrial zone to mineral extraction and excavation overlay. It was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission and was denied by the county council. The parcel is legal. It matches the configuration ahead on August 8th, 2006. Approved uses in the industrial zone includes caretakers, residents, general manufacturing, commercial kennel slash animal shelter, storage and warehousing, self-service, self-service storage facility, transport services, general vehicle repair, mobile truck, telecommunications facility major, and approved uses in the mineral extraction and excavation overlay includes mineral extraction and topsoil extraction. Adjacent uses, parcels to the north and east are primarily used for agricultural purposes, and parcels to the west are primarily residential, and then parcels to the south are a mix of residential and agricultural. The nearest parcel in the county that's in the industrial zone is located a mile and a half to the northwest. The nearest parcel in the mineral extraction and excavation overlay is located four fifths of a mile to the south. The property is not located in any future annexation area. It's located in the agricultural and ranching, the Cash County general plan. That states location, private agricultural landscapes in Cash Valley outside of municipalities. Example areas include most of the valley. Purpose and character, agricultural and rangeland uses on private lands under conservation easements are expected to continue in the valley. Separation from dense residential developments is advantageous. The agricultural landscape provides separation between adjacent municipalities and protects suitable soils. Preferred land uses includes agriculture, ranching, rural residential uses at densities of less than one unit per 10 acres, conservation easements and agritourism. Secondary land uses include industrial and commercial uses directly supportive agriculture, so processing, packaging, and distribution. Clustered subdivision developments, outdoor recreation, farm reper housing. Discouraged uses includes residential developments at densities of greater than one unit per 10 acres, if not a clustered subdivision development, commercial office, commercial retail, flex office slash industrial, and heavy industrial. In terms of roads, the parcel currently doesn't have any road frontage. However, they're planning on purchasing another parcel, 81634, that's US 91. US 91 is a UDOT road. It's classified as a principal arterial, provides access to multiple dwellings and agricultural areas, but is primarily the main connection between Smithfield and Richmond. It's classified as an access category four, which has a minimum driveway spacing of 500 feet and a street spacing of 660 feet. Access to any proposed development must be approved by UDOT, and the frontage in this zone would be 150 feet. Cash County did have a comment. They would require a 20-foot all-weather surface access road to get back in there in the event that some accident happens. The applicant will have to work with waste management for solid waste disposal. The notice was posted online, posted to three public places, and mailed to all property owners within 300 feet on May 23rd. The agenda for the meeting was posted at the county website on May 23rd. One public comment has been received, and staff has no recommendation, but will help you draft a letter to county council.
Okay, thank you, Connor. Any thoughts, Commissioners, on this before you open up to a public hearing?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll now open for a public hearing. Please come up, state your name, and keep the comments to three minutes, please.
The applicant wanted to do a quick presentation.
Okay, the applicant would like to come up?
Yeah, my name is Hal Christensen. I'm the president of Terex Engineering and Construction, and that is the applicant for the rezone on the property. We, we have, we would like to address a lot of issues that were brought up last time that probably wasn't covered all that well and shown on the screen there. Impact on rural environment, visibility, noise, dust, and heavy haul truck traffic, UDOT-US 91 intersection, groundwater diversions and water quality, visibility, and additional gravel pit. Okay. There we go. The property, as you see right there, I have, or Terex has 387 acres under contract right now. 160-acre parcel to the south is where we propose to put the gravel pit. The 127 acres to the north, we're going to leave as-is, is agricultural, so that will not be developed into a gravel pit. The, the 160 acres will include a plant to manufacture asphalt, concrete, pit run, and gravel pit materials, and that'd be located in the northwest corner of the property, as you can see it right there. Now, we're going to have an access road from that plant site that snakes over to US 91, and we'll have an intersection with US 91. So, I'm going to hit the next. All right, I did meet with UDOT April 8th, and at their Region One office, and the attendees was the Region One engineer David Alcar and Jesse Mott, who is the Cash County, from the Cash County Engineering Department. We had a good conversation. We went over all the issues that might be associated with that intersection, and whether or not it was practical to do so, if there's too many obstacles to be had to go ahead with the design and construction of it. Basically, what I'm going to have to have is two permits. One's called the conditional access permit, which basically you submit construction drawings. They take a look at it and approve the intersection project for construction. The other one is the construction encroachment permit, which gives you permission to go ahead with the construction of the intersection per UDOT standards. What UDOT is saying they're going to require is 750-foot acceleration and deceleration lanes on the east side of the highway, north and south of the intersection. They might have to widen the center lane, but they're not sure about that till they do a traffic study. And appropriate traffic controls and signage, relocation of existing utilities, storm drainage and retention basin, and a haul road, the new haul road will be a 60-foot wide right-of-way with 52-foot of pavement. We expect at full capacity that there'll be 20 to 30 trucks a day use that road to and from the gravel pit. So anyway, other than that, there are no deal-killing issues that they raised to say that the intersection can't be built. It was a good conversation. So I'm optimistic that we can get that intersection designed and built. Can I try the next one there? All right, this is an isometric view of the property. As you can see, the gravel pit part to the south takes up about half of what's called Crow Mountain. The plant site, where we'll have a batch plant, hot plant, crushers and all that stuff, is in the lower left-hand corner, the northwest corner of the 160-acre property. You can see the access road where it intersects with US 91. As you can see there, the gravel pit itself is located about two and a half miles from Smithfield and two and a half miles from Richmond, about dead to middle. And I don't think there's a better place for gravel pit in all of Cash County. It's isolated. You can't see it from the highway, and noise will be minimal. And again, it's, and it's anywhere from 400 foot to almost 1,500 foot away from all those houses and farm buildings there on the fronts of US 91. So it's, it's isolated pretty good. It's not going to have all that much issues with the existing close residence. The, the mountain is 800, from the lowest elevation to the highest elevation, from where the ground, the plant site is, to the top of that peak is 800 feet, and the property will provide for about 80 million cubic yards of materials to be processed into asphalt, concrete, and other rock products. Okay. Go back to, go back one way. I forgot to mention, the plant will have a crusher, some screen boxes, asphalt, hot plant ready-mix concrete, batch plant, stacking conveyor belts, and heavy earth moving equipment, equipment and handling equipment, heavy haul, transport trucks, mixed, yeah, concrete mixed trucks. And it will have an administrative office and the equipment maintenance shop, and some buried fuel storage tanks. Okay, the, one of the big issues last time we presented this was the impact on groundwater quality and groundwater diversions. The, as you can see, the light green shaded area in the lower left-hand corner of the map there is a groundwater sensitive area. And you can see it just barely touches the southwest corner of the 160-acre gravel pit property. And that, all those red dots you can see right there, they are adjudicated water rights, as on record with the state water, or water right engineer. The water, the water quality, the groundwater right there, according to the Utah State Department of Environmental Quality, is Class 1 pristine water, which means it can be used as drinking water with little to no treatment whatsoever. So it's high-quality water. Okay. The Utah Groundwater Protection Act regulates the groundwater sensitive area there. And they regularly monitor groundwater quality in public wells. Now, most of those, not all of those red dots right there are private wells that just used for a single house or for farm irrigation purpose and that kind of thing. That is not regulated by the state of Utah. If somebody suspects they got bad water quality for whatever reason, they take water samples to the, to Salt Lake and have the Division of Water Quality do lab analysis on it, then they do what's necessary to take care of it with that particular landowner. But by and large, none of that water qual, none of that groundwater is really monitored on a regular basis.
So I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What are you going to do with those existing wells there, that's right, in the middle of your gravel pit?
What's that?
What are you going to do if those existing wells are right in the middle of your gravel pit, right on the, on the northwest corner? Are you just going to work around them, or what's your?
We're just going to leave them as is. We're not going to, we're not going to ask whoever owns those water wells to cap them and relocate them or none of that, none. I'm going to, I'll talk about that in a little bit of detail here in a minute, okay? The, talk about water quality here a minute. The gravel pit, a gravel pit, their biggest threat to groundwater is three areas. There's a lot of heavy equipment on a gravel pit, and the bigger equipment's got fuel tanks of anywhere between 300 and 400 gallons. And it would be possible that you get eruption on those gas tanks, and you've got 400 gallons of diesel fuel on the ground. The other possibility is buried fuel tanks. Probably have a couple of tanks, about 5,000 gallons apiece. Possible that you get leaking that tank, and it infiltrates the groundwater. And then there's the surface runoff from a storm event. They carry hydrocarbons and gets in the drainage system and ends up downstream somewhere. Spillage from a, from a heavy equipment with these large fuel tanks is not, it's going to contaminate probably about a eight-foot, 10-foot diameter ball of soil, and that'll be dug out immediately with an excavator. It'll be dug out and removed and replaced. Buried fuel tanks, they probably put in heavy wall, double-wall steel fuel tanks. So if the inside tank gets compromised and leaks, it's not going to get past the second tank. Plus, the tank will be sitting on a concrete detention slab. So if it does, the odds of getting past two heavy wall tanks is pretty slim. But if it does, it's going to be confined on a, on a concrete, buried concrete detention slab. Plus, we're going to put groundwater monitors at the buried tanks to monitor or detect any leakage immediately. Surface contamination from storm runoff, we are going to put in a detention basin and put in what's called a concrete structure that skims off hydrocarbons that migrate to the detention basin from runoff onto the, out of the property. And it skims the hydrocarbons off, then you pump it out and take it off to dispozo at, in a landfill somewhere. Okay, let's talk about water rights here a minute to address your question, how that's going to impact the diversions of all those little wells there immediately adjacent to the, the gravel pit. There are 51 adjudicated groundwater rights within a 3,000-foot radius of the, the plant on the, in the gravel pit property. And they all add up to 1,340 acre-feet of total adjudicated groundwater rights. Let me talk about adjudication here a minute. Hopefully that answers your question. Adjudicated means that the state engineer has modeled that whole groundwater watershed system. And I happen to know personally the guy that modeled the Bear River, that did that. And they model it to make sure that when it's all totaled up, none of the groundwater is mined, meaning that there's no diversions, groundwater diversions that exceed the infiltration of groundwater source. So, it's been modeled and adjudicated, and every one of those red dots can divert whatever their water right says they can acre-feet-wise. And that is not going to impact the, any other water rights there whatsoever. Now, having said that, the funk property, meaning the gravel pit and the 127 ag property to the north, has about 31 acre-feet total of water rights. The gravel pit will use less than five acre-feet. That's all we got. We need drinking water for, for administrative office and a shop, and that's about it with a little bit. Now, there is a lot of water used to wash aggregate, but that's already circulated water. It's reused. So it runs through the nozzles, ends up in another pump station somewhere, and it just gets recirculated. It's not used once and diverted somewhere off the property. So, yet again, it's, the gravel pit is going to use less than five acre-feet of water a year. That accounts for less than 0.5% of all the water diverted in that picture right there. So, I don't think it's going to have much of an impact. All right, let's try the next one. Okay, this is a, shows the, all the gravel pits in the Cash Valley area, major gravel pits. When I say major gravel pits, that's gravel pits with at least $5 to $10 million of unmanned material. There is seven pits in that picture. The black dots are existing gravel pits, and you will notice that most of them are west of the main thoroughfare through Cash Valley, US 91 and State Road 71. The current demand for rock products in Cash Valley right now have been estimated at about 800,000 cubic yards per year. I got that number from my information provided by the California Geological Survey and the Arizona Rock Products Association, which are pretty good authorities on rock products and demand for rock products in the major municipality areas.
If you can get to a conclusion on this, because we're running short on time for the other public hearings.
Oh.
If you can.
Speed it up?
Speed it up.
Okay, let me try to speed. I was going to, I was going to make that statement right from the get-go. I've got probably about an hour's worth of stuff and 10 minutes to talk about it. So, okay, let me speed it up. The, the market value for the 800,000, or cubic yards of material a year is right around $110 million to $140 million per year. 90% of those rock products sold in Cash County has to be gone through a, a gravel pit with processed equipment, like a crusher, a hot plant, and all that stuff. So it has to be trucked from those, those, the black dots do not have manufacturing equipment. So all that has to be trucked over to two existing plants, one by Staker Parsons and one by Legrand Johnson. Those pits are, it's about 10 to 20 miles away. You've got one, Pisgah Rock Products, it's up starting Canyon. That amounts to, where's my notes here? That amounts to about 15, a million, five to two million miles a year, traveling back and forth with 20-ton dump trucks. Most of that is through residential areas, primarily in Welsville. So, let's get to the last slide real quick. I'll go through that and I'll get out of your hair. Summarizing, is marginal impact on homes and communities. Preliminary UDOT intersection has been approved. The rock, the gravel pit is going to allow for 50 to 75 years of rock product material reserves. No impact on groundwater, diversions of water quality, significant reduction in heavy truck traffic through existing residential communities, provide dozens of high-paying jobs. And last but not least, is going to generate 800,000 to a million dollars a year in tax revenue. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Have any questions, Commissioners? Thank you.
Good.
Does anyone have any public comment they'd like to, if they'd like to come up now, this is the time for this?
My name is Larry Copeland. Out on the property that's adjoining with that gravel pit and batch plant that he wants to put in is, I am not in favor of it. I do not want to see that occur. There is one just south of it. There is one just south of us, three quarters of a mile. We get a lot of noise and dust from it. We don't need another one. Nor do I need my well contaminated with spillage from the oil, from the trucks, as well as from the equipment vibration. That fault line comes down off that mountain, right there behind my place. And any vibration through there guaranteed is small, very small, but it is still a possibility of shifting. And I know that these can happen and I know water is diverted just by simple vibration of soil and especially gravel. He claims it will be minimal or to none. I do not believe this. I've worked around gravel pits in my past. I do not believe that one bit. He puts a, put a good picture up that the county will make a lot of money by approving this. And it's very possible they could. But at what cost to the rest of us? I don't believe this should be rezoned in any way. And besides, we have a lot of deer and elk because it was displaced by the ski resort to the north that now winter in that area. And as you, as any of us gone the highway up there, seen a lot of deer killed on the highway, it will just get even higher if you start putting them and funnel them down to, towards the river to get past the gravel pit. So I, I am definitely against it and I ask you to vote against it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce Jensen. I am Larry's neighbor, just to the south. And my property also butts up to this new wonderful opportunity. Larry is absolutely correct. Elk have been coming back there and it's absolutely beautiful to watch. I don't want that disrupted. I would really not like to see our wells disrupted. I don't believe that 20 trucks a day is not going to disrupt the well system. The wells are already not wonderful. We don't need, we don't need additional circumstances causing them to be worse. I have a direct line of sight from my backyard to this new facility and it's, I'm so sorry, but it's not going to be very pretty in my backyard. And it's a beautiful mountain. We, we don't need that there. And there's plenty of other gravel pits in the valley as was stated and was stated at the last meeting as well. So I hope that you take that into consideration. I'm very opposed to this. Thank you.
My name is Rich Olson and I represent the Stephen L. Olson Living Trust Agreement. I'm also the attorney for that family. And we oppose this vehemently. First and foremost, it will devalue our property greatly. I notice that he doesn't want to live next to the gravel pit. Secondly, it will affect the water rights that we have there. We've already talked to geothermal engineers who have assessed that and we will be working hard to make sure that we ensure our rights to those and if they're affected in any way. And then thirdly, it takes one of the fundamental rights of property and that is the right to quiet enjoyment. Says that it will be minimal. We know that that's not true in any way, shape or form. We oppose this. We ask that you vote against this. Thank you.
Any other comment?
I'm at 8588 North, Highway 91, just north of the proposed gravel pit site. And I oppose this rezone to industrial. I remain skeptical that water sources won't be impacted. And I know as I was driving by this last week and I looked south at Crow Mountain, that having a batch plant there will definitely change the look and the feel of, of the mountain and the area as you drive by. That will detract from the rural and agricultural area. And I also ask that you please vote against this and keep the area rezoned as agricultural. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jaleen Mendenhall. We are the Mendenhall Curve, Mendenhalls. We live directly in view of Crow Mountain. Our address is 8472 North, Highway 91. We have two seeps that are very likely to be affected, mostly in quantity. As it is, we share one of those seeps with the kings across the highway, which obviously makes our amount of water half of what it seems to be. Water is a first concern. The second concern is dust, but I want to refer back to water with it. There was this discussion that you would only use whatever amount of water it was. But I was also told the last time we were here that they would be dusting or taking care of the dust with their water trucks as they go down the road. And I am sure they're not going to recycle that water. And I'm not sure where that will come from. The second issue is the trucks. I've read the statement that was made by Mr. Christiansen that was going to be presented a month ago in May. And the discussion at that time was that it would be 100 trucks going down the mountain. And if you do the math, that's one truck every five minutes. That's a lot of trucks. And why it's 20 now, I don't know. But I just know what was written in that literature. Another item is the highway. And I know UDOT will do what UDOT does, but I don't know how there could possibly be that road used without a stoplight put there, a massive intersection, all of that kind of things. Do we really want that on our freeway that we use from here to the Idaho border? The last thing I want to say is that. I appreciate how hard Mr. Christian has, Christiansen has worked on this, but I certainly do oppose it and I hope that you all do too. Thank you.
Paul Davis. My family owns the property to the south of the proposed project. I just wanted to mention that several of these maps appear to include part of our property. So we may want to clarify exactly what property is to be included.
Davis Trust, maybe. Okay, any other comments?
Motion to close.
Second that.
Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we, a little bit of discussion here to figure out.
I'll listen to you. You give the word.
My, if you look at two of the pictures in the packet, or, or that he put up there, the one with all the wells, but some of those are springs, some are wells, all the different water rights on those parcels. And then you look at the picture just above that, you're looking from the west back to the east with, with half a crow mountain sticking up there. For one, I don't know how we can think that's not going to be visible from the highway. Right, we're going to, we're going to cut half a crow mountain off. It's very, very visible, somewhat of a landmark in that area of the county. And taking that much down, whether it's, it's flat with the existing ground after that or not, knowing the hydrology of the county and how water gets to wells and springs, the risk of affecting 30 plus water rights for a gravel pit that we may not need because in the packet, just, just the gravel pits he mentioned, give us 100 years worth of gravel, at 800,000, or 8 million, whatever the, the number was there, cubic yards per year. And if you add Pisgah in there, which he claims has enough gravel for Box Elder, Cache and Northern Weber Counties for 100 years, I'm not certain we need another one that, that in my mind is going to be a big visual change as you drive from here to Idaho along the highway. And we, we do, we do have another gravel pit that's approved that hasn't been started, that is not on that list too, that we don't know how much is there. So we may have 200 years worth of gravel already in approved pits. We probably don't need another 100 years worth, at least in my opinion, mostly for the water and the visual effects that would happen if this were to be approved.
Yeah, what, what he said. You, you know, I mean, it's, the, the drive coming from Idaho, the welcome to Cache Valley that we could paint on the cliff.
Yeah.
You know, everybody will be able to see that from a long ways away. And rezoning is, is a discretionary decision. No master planning work that's been done, contemplated, any kind of industrial uses in this area. And I'm not willing to sacrifice our natural heritage, the natural landform that everybody's going to see for, for this project, so.
And it doesn't seem to be consistent with the, the master plan for the county. And it affects the good citizens that live right next to it as well, so. Do we have a motion to that point?
I'd make a motion to recommend denial of the, let's go back to the top so I can get the name right.
Option one.
Option one, yep.
With those four.
The funk 168.
The funk, funk Richmond gravel pit rezon with the, you know, those conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Is it actually opposed?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, we'll start, we'll open the next public hearing, the three cluster homes, 15 acre ag rezone.
Zoom to the other end of the county.
Which we're going to start most of the meeting.
Yeah.
Are you voting on these? You should be voting.
I am voting.
Okay.
Yep, I am voting.
Didn't hear you over the, over the others.
He's quiet.
I'll speak louder.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, Connor.
So this is the three clustered homes, 15 acres ag rezone. That's a requested rezone, 18.71 acres from the agricultural zone to the rural five zone. There's a bit of history on this parcel in August of 2024. It went through the rezone application process to go from the 810 zone to the rural two zone. It was recommended for denial by the planning commission. It was unanimously denied by the county council. In March of 2025, this parcel again went through the rezone application process to go from the 810 zone to the rural five zone. It was also recommended for denial by the planning commission and was denied by the county council. Should the rezone request be approved, the maximum number of lots will be three. The parcel does not match the configuration out of August 8, 2006, and went through some boundary line adjustments, but it's still legal. Approved uses in the rural five zone include single family dwelling, accessory apartment, accessory slash agricultural structures, home based business, seasonal cabin, residential living facilities, home based kennel, bed and breakfast in, religious meeting house, utility facility distribution, farm stand, boarding facility and site grading. Adjacent uses to the east and south are primarily used for agricultural purposes, while properties to the north and west are a mix of agricultural and residential. The nearest parcel in the county that is in the rural five zone is located a mile to the northwest of the subject parcel. Future land use, this property is located within the Wellsville City future annexation area, which is farmland residential cluster, five acres. The future plan includes this as agriculture and ranching. Location for these areas is private agricultural landscapes in the Cache Valley outside of the municipalities. Example areas includes most of the valley. Purpose and character is agricultural and range land uses on private lands under conservation easements. Separation from dense residential developments is advantageous. Agricultural landscape provides separation between adjacent municipalities and protects suitable soils. Preferred land uses includes agriculture, ranching, rural residential uses at densities of less than one unit per 10 acres, conservation easements and agraritism. Secondary land uses includes industrial and commercial uses directly supported by agriculture, so processing, packaging, distribution. Clustered subdivision developments, outdoor recreation and farm worker housing. Discouraged uses includes residential development dense at, residential developments at densities of greater than one unit per 10 acres, not in the clustered subdivision development. Commercial office, commercial retail, flex office slash industrial and heavy industrial. It is in the urban expansion overlay. So the location of this is adjacent to town and city limits within municipal, municipal annexation policy areas where future development could be accommodated with urban level services. As communities may provide additional information, these reference areas may be updated on the future land use map without an adopted amendment to reflect the probable expansion of services within the 10 to 20 year timeframe. Example areas includes unincorporated enclaves between or within cities. Purpose and character is to provide for unified municipal growth that aligns with the municipal land use plan in an approved annexation policy area within approved county intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement. If developed, these areas would need to be annexed in the neighboring community, which would facilitate service provision. Preferred land uses includes annexations within these areas should strive to accomplish the densities, intensities and street patterns contained where urban level infrastructure is available. Affordable housing options are also appropriate in this area. Secondary land uses include civic meeting spaces, residential support uses, medical, schools, fire and police stations. Discouraged uses that are not, include uses that are not consistent with the municipal general plan or existing county zoning. Roads, currently the parcel does not have any frontage. The nearest road is SR 23. It's classified as a minor arterial and minor arterials in rural areas are typically designed to provide a relatively high overall travel speeds, minimum interference to through movement. This road provides access to multiple dwellings in agricultural areas, but is primarily the main connection between Mendenham, Wellsville, SR 30 and Highway 8991. The section of SR 23 is classified as an access category four, which has a minimum driveway spacing of 500 feet, minimum street spacing of 600 feet, or 660 feet. Access for SR 23 must be approved by UDOT. UDOT has stated the applicant can apply for a permit that would grant access for up to 10 homes. However, UDOT's jurisdiction ends at the property line of parcel 116813, which is currently owned by James and Marcy Larson. The construction of the roundabout on parcels 116813 and 11697 was completed without approval from the public works department is not compliant as the area lies in the county's jurisdiction. Frontage and buildable lots in the county requires a minimum of 90 feet on a public or private road. The proposed road to access the proposed development will need to meet county standards and roadway layout. Cache County Fire District deny of any comments. Noticing was posted online to three public places and mailed to all property owners within 300 feet on May 23rd. Agenda for the meeting was posted to the county website on May 23rd as well. At the time of writing the report, we hadn't received any public comments. We received some in the meantime. Staff is recommending denial of the three clustered homes, 15 acre ag rezone for the following reasons. First, the Willis RE5 rezone request, an application for the property to be rezoned from the agricultural zone to the rural five zone, was denied in March of 2025. Additionally, before that, an earlier rezone request was denied as well. There have been no significant changes since the denial of the two previous applications. The road current, or the parcel currently has no road frontage. The existing turnaround providing access to the property was constructed without approval from the public works department. The planned alignment of 4200 South will extend the roadway in a straight east-west direction. So it's likely that at 4200 South will be located on 116813, which means the subject property will continue to lack frontage. Although the applicant can obtain an access agreement from UDOT, their jurisdiction ends at the, end of the property line. Past that property line, it's all county. The nearest area in the county that is in the rural five zone is located one mile away. And the rezone is partially inconsistent with the Cache County general plan, which states agriculture and ranching, an area which places an emphasis on agriculture related activities. The RE5 zone has fewer use types that are agriculture related.
Okay, thanks Connor. Any comments before we, Commissioners? Any comments before we, Commissioners, before we open up to a public hearing?
So so Connor, was the only change between last time and this time going to the cluster?
Pretty much, yeah. There was also, uh, last time there was a question about that UDOT access. So that got clarified, uh, yeah, it's just the cluster. If I, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to look back through there. Okay, make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Eleven sixty-nine and four. That piece and then a little cluster of homes right above that. Yeah, pull it down a little bit. Make it a little bigger there, right there, perfect. Yeah, my name is Jed Willets. Um, I, um, I thought I'd start. I live right where the lower piece right in the middle is, where the red line. I'm nine acre, nine point eight three acres. Um, I just wanted to start with this because I had, last August, one of the people, Scott Hendry, that stood up and spoke against this. He said to me after, why don't you build next to your house in the field? Why are you trying to do this? And then, I can't remember if it was Phil or Evan Bankhead that spoke the last March twenty-eleven, March eleventh or twenty-fifth. Same thing, why don't, I used to lease that that pasture where my name is there to them years ago. And he's like, why don't you build in that pasture? Right now, nine point eight three acres, I can't do anything else. I have one home on there. Even though right north of me is really what you would call an RU two, that was nine point eight three acres. I know the zoning was done back before when it was a, you could split a nineteen seventy parent parcel five times. That's how that ended up. So right now, my, I started, my son Tyler was wanting to build a house. Uh, he's got two kids, married for a few years. That was my intent. Um, this piece that we're gonna talk about, that was my intention, cuz I knew I couldn't do anything with this. Even though over the past twenty years, I could have probably had a few lots along four thousand west. Now, nothing. And I I think as time goes on, as you guys went to from the different um, zoning and then just said, we're gonna do A ten, and then you're gonna come and apply for RU two or RU five. I hope in the future, you'll just realize that there's people like me that have almost ten acres. So if I had point one seven more, I could apply for an RU five and maybe have one other lot. But you kinda see where it's at for some people in that situation. Where you're really stuck, property value, you know, it's just, it's limited. Um, even though there's really an RU two right north of me. Um, so the whole reason I'm here is the last um, council meeting, March eleventh, um, they, the council talked for seven minutes and thirty-eight seconds. And they had some good questions. Sandy Goodlander had a clarification question. I spent a few years in Logan City planning a zoning commission. There were certain circumstances where you could cluster homes. Could you explain how we can have these smaller lots? Angie Zeterquist explained that, how that works with the county. Keegan Garrity said, I have a procedural question. If there is new information, this was about that UDOT meeting we had. Um, if there is new information that planning and zoning didn't have access to, and they have made their decision based off the information they had, but that is updated now, does it ever get sent back to them to review a second time with that information? And David Zook responded, it doesn't really happen. You you apply again. So at that point, I said, well, and I guess that's not considered a substantial change, but that's kinda what the county, the, David Zook had said, this, you apply again and um, so that's, that's that. Um, that was March eleventh. They had some good conversation. It was continued cuz they didn't, they didn't, no one wanted to vote on it, so they continued it. Um, Nolan Gunna was, he was out of town. He was in Europe for that meeting, but he was back on March twenty-fifth. Um, he was the first one that spoke. Um, that, my entire time on that, I thought we'd have some more good conversation. It was two minutes and forty-eight seconds from the opening to when it was seconded and denied. So I just, I would appreciate it as you guys go along and deal with these RU five and RU, or or tens and twos and um, just to have more conversation. Don't just shut it down. It, this is the time that everybody, the public wants to hear what your real thoughts are, not just if we can get out of here in two minutes and forty-eight seconds and let's just, if planning and zoning did this, then let's just go with them. And if staff did this, let's just go with them and it's um, anyway, that's that. If you could, um, do you wanna pop it in there?
I can't plug anything in. I can't plug anything in, just for this IT.
So how do I put this in? So they did it last time?
I can't, sorry.
So is that a standard thing?
I suppose so, but if nothing's really changed from last time, we have the paper, the presentation here.
I, I really, I thought if you brought a PDF or a, they could plug it in and you could put something up on the screen. That's happened, the last two meetings, they've done that.
Oh, I'm not sure. If that's protocol, then I guess we can't do it.
Okay, so what information that his slides he had before the funk, he sent them to you? Well, that helps me zero. Okay, well, um, I would just like to, um, the last time it went through RU five, um, it uh, recommendation, it gave options. Um, the staff didn't take a position. They basically said, recommend denial. Um, these are the reasons, recommend approval, these are the reasons. Um, one of the um, things that was, if you recommend approval before, the rezon is consistent with the Wellsville City general plan. The Wellsville City general plan identifies the farm. This area is farmland residential cluster, five acre. Um, and I went and had a meeting with um, Matt Phillips yesterday with uh, Public Works and I asked him a lot of questions about this road. And when I, um, why don't you go back to my piece anyway? Um, I asked him a lot of questions about that road. I helped Jenna Starley, the previous owner of this parcel. These two parcels used to be east and west, and we did boundary line adjust so that east piece had no frontage at all, and the west piece had the frontage on the highway. So we did a boundary line adjustment and we basically did that roundabout. It was before Kyle and Marcy Larson purchased the piece, and then we put this in. We got the UDOT approval, we did all that. I didn't realize at that point that even to do that road, you have to come in and get a a permit or get the county's blessing. That's my bad. I don't know what I can do to reverse that. I asked Matt, I said, do we need to dig that whole thing out then and just redo it once, and that, once we have a permit to do that? And the more I talked to him, he said, you know, really, all of this is part of a subdivision. It's not really, hasn't, it's not part of a rezon. It's part, it's something we would see in a subdivision. So the more I talked to him, for about twenty minutes, that was, all of these things are just things that happen with a subdivision and um, I just think the, I would like to ask, just, uh, let me see if there's any other comments I have. The parcel currently has no road frontage. We did that easement, even though I guess it's not looked at as an actual road where we didn't get it approved beforehand. That was the whole intention to do. So it had ninety feet of frontage around that cir, the radius for that piece north. And then it had that same for the south piece, so you could have the two lots. Um, one of the reasons recommend approval last time, the rezon is partially consistent with the Cache County general plan. The parcel is located in the urban expansion overlay. And should any potential subdivisions be clustered, densities of residential developments that are greater than one unit per ten acres are encouraged. Um, and then, let's see, just a couple more things. So in ordinance, um, twelve, it's probably in this little packet you guys have, but it says, um, one of the things, let's see, um, where it hasn't changed any, um, in, is five. The nearest air area in the county that is in the RU five zone is located one mile away. That is up where the Marshall, Mon, and those two, nor, right north of Maple Rise. That is actually in the Mendon city annexation area, where this is in the Wellsville city annexation area. So I think it's kinda hard to say, well, the nearest one is here, just to base it off the nearest one. In the, in seven, on this little sheet here, it says it's ordinance twelve point oh two, point zero one zero, um, seven. It says the current county land use ordinance does not specify appropriate locations for the rural five RU five zone, but does contain general guidelines for its implementation. So it's, it's kinda hard to say, well, it's not close enough to the next one where you guys say in your own code that you don't specify appropriate locations. So that kinda contradicts, I see. Um, and then I would just ask, um, all the people that come up here that, the same opposition that has been against this since the start. Um, I mean, my whole thing was to cluster the homes, so I I've always thought the county would like to have more open agricultural land in the homes that would be on land kind of in a smaller area. Um, this little sheet, which is probably in your packet, it's on the slide, but this has thirty-three feet coming in here, and this would be a new, new roundabout. And then I'd be willing to continue this thirty-three feet all along the bottom of the property, whether it goes to Wellsville City or the county, that would be half of a sixty-six foot road. So in the future, if this parcel below, below me ever came in, they would do the other thirty-three feet. So that would continue. Um, another thing that's
Can you conclude your comments, please?
Yeah, yeah, another thing that's, uh, if you look on your, the county map, um, it actually has a radius coming off of forty-two hundred south, and it has a radius that comes down right all through Scott Hendry's land and ties in with Center Street. So, um, that were, everything, the city wants it to go east and west, but that's in. I would just ask, like you guys did on the Marshall, Mon, and then the thirty acres that went to the RU five that was passed right north of that. Um, you asked some of the people that stood up, like, a lot of them lived in the homes that were on acre, acre and a half lots. Ask some of the people that come up here, um, what size of lots they live on. A number of the people, their house is on a one acre lot. Another person, the house is on a one and a half acre lot. So it's, it's tough to say, well, we don't want a five acre lot, but we live on an acre lot. I think that's very hypocritical. I can see, hey, I don't want it in my backyard, even though we, we live on an acre, nobody else.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to come up?
Chair?
We did.
We did.
My name is Mark Lyons. I'm one of the people that lives on the acre and a half lot. This has been an educational experience for me. Um, I'm not sure if it's just a game of attrition, why we keep coming back here. These prior hearings, there seemed to be five things that caused a decline of this thing. The first was permission from UDOT. I would encourage you, anything that you're told has been done here, you get it directly from them, from UDOT, from the city of Wellsville, and not a, I talked to them and they said. Get something from those people, because you'll be told anything. And in one of the meetings, we were told, I've got approval for access. And the gentleman from UDOT stood up and said, that's not true. He doesn't have approval from UDOT, so get the approval from UDOT. That seemed to be the first issue that was up there. I think it's interesting that I I accidentally poured asphalt and built access, unapproved access onto a piece of property that wasn't even his. It goes across the Larsons who he sold the property to with the idea that they could build a house on that property, which I believe if this thing gets rezoned, that may block Larsons from being able to use property that they bought from this same gentleman for the purpose of possibly building a house there. Um, the city of Wellsville said it wasn't consistent with their planning. There was, they said it didn't fit with their expansion plans. There were some questions about water and wetlands that I've never heard those being addressed and resolved. The commission at one of these meetings made the statement, they said, we wanna be real careful that we don't set a precedent here as been, as has been set in other areas. And if we open this one up, we open Pandora's box for a lot more there. From a legal standpoint, I don't know what can be done or what can't be done. From an ethical standpoint, to arbitrarily build a road without approval across somebody else's property and maybe shut them off. To me, that speaks volumes to the ethics of the whole idea going on here. So I don't know why we keep getting dragged here again and again and again when I don't think any of these issues that were given for the reason that this was declined have been resolved other than, well, I'll, I can talk to people, or it's okay. I get proof, get proof from the people that can provide that proof. Get something written from the city of Wellsville. Get something written from UDOT. Get something written from any other approvals before you move forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lacey Lichty. Um, I just have a question, like, so all the emails and things that were sent in, like, since, like, last month, I mean, in March, did, is that not coming on to like this, or is it just like a, like a fresh start? Cuz I think we have a lot of family members that weren't able to make it, but they've sent a lot of letters previously, but you said there was nothing sent in. So do those just not like, do they have to send a new stuff? I was just curious.
Each time you have to send new stuff.
I think that was like a miscommunication. Also, uh, I was going through all the things that were said in March, and one thing that I was curious about was um, a letter that was sent in by Sean Betts. He purchased an easement before Jed Willets bought it. And on this, it says that, um, Willets moved my easement and recorded it without my permission, and the new location hinders my access. And this change was recorded without my consent. So there's a big easement situation that's going on. I don't think he discussed that in the last meeting. So he moved someone's easement to give him more property cuz it was along that line. And that's a twenty-foot road that he moved off, where he's gonna put the homes, and moved it without the person who actually purchased that easement. And I think there might be something going on. He said, like, in, he needs to talk to his attorney, make sure that's cleared, cuz I was curious about that. Um, I also was curious, so I had sent in a letter about like safety on that road. I don't know if you guys remember with the busing situation. I do have recordings of um, special needs boy getting off very close to that road and the dangers of that, if you would like me to send in the video. Um, I also have pictures of the road and how little and narrow it is and unsafe it is. Like, it is like a one-lane road off, and it's a, like a four-way. Um, and then another thing was an ecosystem, the wetlands that are there. When we drill three wells, I'm really concerned because there is a lot of wildlife just along there. Like, I mean, crazy amounts of wildlife, cranes, turtles, trout, pheasants. I mean, all of the wildlife is right there, and I'm really concerned for that and the protection for that. And I say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ashton Lichty. You guys are probably really sick of us. I'm just really shocked that, yeah, we have to keep coming back for this. And I just wanted to remind too, also, that road that's right across from where he built his road is a gravel pit road, where gravel trucks are coming down, right there, onto the highway. So if he adds that, that'll be that much more traffic. And then he's talking about cluster, that cluster that it's on right now is what he created, and that has been a disaster since that's built. And that's why they are acre and a half. And the people that live on the acre and a half all oppose this new stuff that he originally did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Lichty, I live in the home in front of that property. Couple concerns I have, we brought it up before. When they put those four wells in north of my well, it affected my well. Now, if he puts three more wells behind mine, how's it going to affect my well this time? That's a big concern I have. Also, the other concern I have is that spring down below. If you put three more wells in there, is that going to affect that spring? That spring feeds upon, it feeds 400, I think it's close to 400 acres of farm ground down below. If you lose that spring, or if it affects that spring in any way, how do we rectify that? Last thing but not least, Jed says he wanted to build a house. He's got 18 acres. He can build a home on that, one home on that 18 acres. We can oppose that. He wants to put one home in there, more power to him, because that's why the zoning is A-10. A lot of people have moved to the county wanting the space, then we have reliters come in that want to do subdivisions like that, and then they want to cluster all the homes in there. Instead of putting them on a five-acre lot, no, let's put them on one-acre lots right next to each other, instead of spreading them out. Again, I ask you to deny it like you have in the past, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just have one statement. I can't see anything different that's changed from March here to address any of the issues you guys denied in the first place. The only difference I can see is that it's in the timeframe of farming season. So your day got a lot shorter, because all the farmers are out there farming their ground, not sitting in here explaining to you why this is a bad idea. So I just urge you guys to stay with your initial decision. As far as the 9.8 acres and the 1.5 acres, everybody that lives in those homes knows what they were buying. They knew they were buying 9.8 acres, but I get one house. I mean, if you, if you make an adjustment for that, there's a lot of people that I know that own five acres that would love to build a house down there, because it's beautiful land. But it's beautiful because it's A-10, and we prevent that stuff from happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, if not?
Close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't see much of a change that's happened at all, so I don't see there's a need to discuss too much here. I just want to get you guys' thoughts on this.
No, it's same discussion.
Yeah.
I guess the only one I might have is, is if Matt, is Matt still back there hiding? There he is. Want to come up for just a second, Matt?
Is that a question?
I saw you say "in" earlier.
He says "no."
Then I wouldn't ask it, I guess if he says "no."
You're supposed to ask the question before I come up, so I got time to think of my response.
So on, on those road issues you discussed with him, do, do you see any way, because that, that was the big reason I denied, you know, recommended denial last time, is because those road issues have to be resolved. Do you see any feasible way that, that works out on that parcel? I know you can't speak for UDOT. I mean, he would have to go through the application with them, and if that got denied, it wouldn't happen anyways, but-
So when you say road issues, do you have anything specific?
So, so could he, could he build that road somewhat to what his proposal showed, that paper he held up or in the packet that you've seen, to meet the counterrequirements for a private road for those, those three lots?
So my discussion with Jed revolved around what the county code says with what's acceptable to the county for roads. Follow the grid pattern, you know, prepare for extension, not dead ends, and so currently as that sits, if we review our current code in the road manual, in the subdivision standards and all that, it'd be very difficult to get that to meet the current standards outlined by the Planning Commission and the County Council, especially where that's, you know, adjacent to another county road, so that would, that would make it very hard for any expansion to the east of there, if that's a, a short little private road. Now, if it extended, that, that, there's some options there, but it'd be very tough for that to, in its current state, to meet the intent of the county code, so. I don't want to say no, I don't want to say yes. There's a lot of variables and what-ifs, but generally speaking, a little teeny private road like that doesn't necessarily meet the intent of the county code.
Okay, thanks, Matt. The other issue is Kyle Larson's property to the south. If he was to put this in, he can't put a home on his lot if he ever wanted to. It's limited, right?
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a conclusion we want to vote on?
Yeah, for me, for me, if it wasn't the road issues, because if you zoom out on that map and the map that's in our packet, right, this is the area that we generally approve RU5s, right? Right next to the city is RU2 a lot of the time. This is just out another, what, half mile or a mile from the city limit. We've done other ones to the north of this, but those road issues ma- make it a little tough. If this had road access right on the highway, for me, it would be pretty easy to recommend approval, but those road issues, and not knowing what it might do to that other parcel, for me, make it, make it tough to recommend approval.
Yeah, substantially no difference, so I would, I'll make that motion to recommend for denial.
Yeah.
Unless you want to say anything.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye. Okay, the next public hearing, running behind, of course, but is the Stewart Minor Subdivision Amendment Number One. Connor, if you'll take us through that?
All right. So Stewart Minor Subdivision First Amendment, I want to request to amend the existing agricultural remainder. On the agricultural remainder, we'll increase in size from 5.21 acres to 5.3 acres. On the parcel that's just north of that, the Smiths, which is parcel 104121, it's not a part of the subdivision, but it will decrease in size from one acre to nine tenths of an acre. Both properties are legal. The agricultural remainder is in the same configuration in size as it was on the reported plat, and then parcel 104121 is in the same size and configuration as it was on August 8th, 2006. As this is an amendment of an agricultural remainder, no new building lots are being created, no water rights required, and no septic feasibility orders required. Roads, its access is from 6,100 South, it's classified as a minor local, and has an existing width of 20 feet, has a 33-foot right-of-way, no paved shoulder, two-foot gravel shoulder to 10-foot clear zone is paved, is not considered substandard in any way. However, as there's no new building lots being, like, proposed, road improvements are not required. The applicant will have to work with Cache County Fire District at the time where they do any development on the property. There's no known sensitive areas. A notice was posted online to three public places, mailed to all property owners within 300 feet on May 23rd, and the agenda was also posted to the county website on May 23rd. No public comments have been received. We did receive one written objection. So Seth Tate, the attorney representing the Smiths, formally objected to the application. Per state code, should an application be received, the Land Use Authority, in this case, Planning Commission, shall hold a public hearing. I think the applicant for that's here, and-
And he's here.
Yeah. But that's-
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Carter. Any questions?
I didn't have any.
Okay. Make a motion for a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anyone like to come up and make a comment? Seth, would you like to come up? Or you're representing of one party and the other party come up too?
Yeah, I don't know if the applicant wanted to-
If the applicant wants to go first.
I'm Brittany Stewart. I think that the denial is somewhat baseless, just because their property was not included in the subdivision plat that ultimately changed their boundary line. Prior to that subdivision, there was a, there's at least two or three other plats that show a different north boundary, because according to Clint Hansen, that, that road there, that 6,100, is not a platted road. So it actually pulls up to the center of the road, and then the county recommended that we go and get, like, an actual survey done at the Smiths' property after the subdivision plat was recorded, to prove where the boundary lines actually are. My mom used to own the Smiths' property, so we know, like, the history of the property out there pretty good. And we have a survey from Clint Hansen that shows the original boundary line and original points that is contradictory to the subdivision plat, so that's why we've amended, or we've, we've applied for an amendment, just to try and get that fixed. It's also caused some issues with our easement, the right-of-way road that goes between the Smiths' and Hay Farms back to our property, because now it doesn't continue all the way to our property. So we just, that's kind of our concern there, just trying to get some of those issues resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kennedy Stewart. I'm speaking on behalf of the Edward and Stewart-Sandra Trust Parcel. In addition to what she stated, we didn't believe there was any issue until 2024, when our parent parcel ID ending in 0024 got deleted, which was the .09 acreage between the Smiths' parcel and the Stewart's parcel. So in our minds, we just thought we had this skinny parcel just out there. We didn't realize until the next tax season that that parcel actually just disappeared. It deleted, and it adjusted the Smiths' boundary line to consume our .09 acreage, which then became an issue, because we, we didn't realize there was an issue until that all took place. But there is a parent parcel ID number that was deleted that you could reference back to if you had questions on that .09 being our owned property and not having anything to do with the Smiths'. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Stewart. I actually owned the Smiths' home and sold it. The actual deed on the home stated the exact measurements of that piece of property, which started in the center of 6,100 South. I, I have a hard time understanding why there's any confusion as far as what property the Smiths' own. I mean, I, I know exactly what property they should own, but, or should have access to, and since then, they have put a fence up too, showing, or putting a no trespassing sign on that piece of land that is really not theirs. So that's basically all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, Counsel, or Commission Members, thank you. I, I think it's evident from the comments that what we're dealing with is a boundary dispute. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I, you are. I'm Seth Tate, and I am legal counsel for the Smiths', so I'm the one that filed the formal objection. I'm here speaking on their behalf. They are present in the back there. I think the, the reason for the objection is that we don't try to resolve boundary disputes with plat amendments. That's not how we do that. Wouldn't that be nice if you had a boundary dispute with your neighbor and you could just amend your plat and win? That'd be great. But that's not how it works. So plat amendments are governed by LUDMA, and you're all familiar with that. In this case, 17-27A-609 is the relevant provision, and the county code just references the state code section there. It indicates that the land use authority can approve a plat amendment if there's good cause. That's the standard that we're working with here tonight. Of course, recent amendments, and the legislature just keeps doing this to us, they have adjusted the boundary adjustment provisions at least four times in the last 10 years. They did it again in the last legislative session, House Bill 40. And, you know, we were all getting used to the idea between a lot-line adjustment and a parcel-boundary adjustment. You've probably had this discussion 100 times here. They got rid of that now, and, and they've now gone to a simple boundary adjustment versus a, you know, a non-simple, what they just call a full boundary adjustment. And interestingly enough, in the definition of a plat amendment now in LUDMA, it actually specifically excludes boundary adjustments as part of a plat amendment process. So in other words, you know, you, you can't impact third-party parcels by adjusting your boundary on the, on law. It's not lawful. Some might say it's rude anyway, but it's not lawful. So clearly, the parties here have disputes related to survey measurements, and there's been some statements about deeds. I don't, don't think that's necessarily accurate, but certainly the Stewart's are entitled to their view of the facts, and, but this is not how we resolve those kinds of disputes. So really, I think the, the big issue for the Smiths' is, hey, look, we have processes for resolving boundary disputes, we have courts of law, we have other ways to do this, but we don't, we don't do this through a plat amendment. So for those purposes, we do believe that the application is unlawful, and, and even if it weren't unlawful, it certainly isn't good cause. We don't do this to try to resolve obvious boundary disputes. So unless you have any questions for me, that's really the thrust of the objection, and, for that reason, the Smiths would really appreciate your vote denying the application this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Bischoff, I'm the other half of the Stewart Minor Subdivision that's kind of listed there. I objected to this because of facts and history and not, we found some metal points in the middle of the road with a metal detector that may be someone's dentures, or could be a marker, or something like that. There's no proof of where that was. In fact, if you go to the county website, cachecounty.gov, there's several histories of surveys that are listed, and there's books that are listed. One of the surveys that I found was one by J.H. Bankhead entry, and it was done by J.H. Martineau, county surveyor, in 1860 to 1880, sometime in that timeframe. And it shows that the boundary of the, of that plat, that survey, is the south edge of the road. Now, they're going to argue that road got bigger over time. Well, the road says that it was two rods wide. A rod is 16.5 feet, 33 feet wide, it was a road. So the boundary of the Stewart's property, or the Smiths' property now, is 33 feet wide of the edge of the south road. And if you look, if you measure the road right now, between the road and the edge of the road, the gravel part of the road, the shoulder of the road, it's 33 to 34 feet wide, still the same. So there's, history proves that the, the Smiths- So there's... History proves that the Smiths' property starts at the edge of the road and goes back to the measurements as it is shown here. If you look at the warranty deed that was provided by Jennifer Smith, Jennifer Stewart, when the Smiths bought the home, and this is in March 17th, 2022, Lot 6, Section 11, which is listed in this 1860s map, starts on the south line of the county road. Another proof that the property line starts on the south side of the county road. And then lastly, I pulled the subdivision through the Stewart Minor Subdivision. I did all the work to do it. I know all about it. It configures with that right there. The county surveyor approved it. So now we have two county surveyors, one from the 1860s and one from 2023 approved it. Planning Commission approved it. I approved it. The Stewart's approved it. Everyone's approved it and we agreed upon it. You can't just change that. So that's why I object to it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Got a question for Connor. Okay. So Connor, do we know why that parcel just disappeared a year ago or two years ago, whenever that was?
I honestly couldn't tell you. I checked with the Recorder's Office and it was just a phantom parcel, apparently.
But they were getting the tax notice for it, it sounds like, for a number of years.
Yeah.
And then it just disappeared.
Imagine the tax or the Recorder's Office did something with it, maybe they merged it or something. But yeah, it was just a phantom parcel. We can really drive it down.
That seems odd. That's not very good. Yeah.
Looking at Chris.
This is something that I haven't... I don't remember this coming up before. But anyway, yeah. What, I mean, given it's a kind of a boundary dispute or whatever, what's our responsibility here?
So when I'm looking through essentially the state code references that were given, 1727A-609, mustn't any sort of mandatory approval to this, it's a may, right? And one of the requirements, if I understand it correctly, when I'm looking at 27A-608 part over... I mean, even in Connor, if I'm understanding the situation right, you have, and one of the conditions laid out in the report anyways is that those objecting to it are going to have to sign off on this anyways.
That was my question.
So it's not... It looks like that's a requirement under the state code anyways. If I'm understanding the situation, what's happening here, properties and all that stuff, that's going to happen. So practically speaking, that's not going to happen because it already...
Unless or until they work that out.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a civil boundary issue. So I don't think there's...
We can approve it, but it's not going to...
Yeah, my recommendation at this point is, it's a discretionary function at this point. Seems like it's not really, it seems like it's more of a civil boundary issue anyways. And so my thought is, just don't misunderstand, you know, reading that code and practically speaking of it, let them figure it out and just let it pass at this point, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it seems like the other ones that I'm aware of that have happened around the county, that's what the landlords have done, right? One surveyor came from this point, one came from this point, and the lines crossed. And they had to, that didn't ever come in here because that was more of a civil matter where my only concern was that the county was billing the applicant for that tax on that phantom parcel for however long. And then the county just made it disappear, and we have no record of why, which is, to me, is concerning. Right? We should have a record. Someone was paying for something and then they lost it. And now they got to go to the civil matter to get that parcel back.
And you would assume that it would have been absorbed into...
Into one or the other, yeah.
Yeah, merged together.
And if it merged to the other property owner...
Not that it went away, but it got merged in.
If it merged to the non-taxpaying property owner, that seems like it merged the wrong direction. That's my concern is maybe the merging happened... Yeah, I don't know why, but it seems like it went the wrong direction in this case, would be my only concern. And legally, I don't know. I mean, the county should have some record of why they did that.
It makes sense that there should be some record. I can't speak. I don't know what happened.
I can see if it was 30 years ago they didn't, but if it was a year ago...
I don't know. Let's be fair.
That's bad.
So rather than us get involved in the civil, do we have to take a position?
It is a... My read of statute is it's a may, even if they checked all the boxes here. So you can certainly say it's not ripe or you can deny it at this point. I mean, technically, if you wanted to approve it, I think you can approve it. There's another condition is that, because I don't anyways, but the petition, they're not going to sign this, nothing happened.
Yeah. They're going to have to go through the same process, whether we approve it or deny it.
Yeah. Given the issues that have been raised here, I don't know if the necessary has been caused to do it. It hasn't been brought up though with it, but it should be anyways, so.
Okay. Thank you. Well...
I mean, sometimes we've, in, I mean, not, there's not been a very similar situation, but we've given the parties time to work something out. I don't know if that's relevant here or not, but that's the only other thought I had.
Continue us to see if they work it out and will sign it. But then they could just go in and make the change anyways.
They could. So I don't know if that's a better decision or not, but it's just a thought.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a civil issue.
Can we move forward or... Recommend to deny.
Yeah, that's a tough one. Okay, do you have a second on that? On that, on the... Okay.
Yeah, this one, yeah, wouldn't be a recommendation, right? We just deny where it's a subdivision.
Okay.
We'll make another one.
Okay.
Just trying to move forward.
So do I have a second on Val J.'s motion here?
I'm in the middle. Let's prove it and let him find it out or deny it and let him...
I know what...
I think the outcome's the same, so.
Yeah, that's my conclusion. It's about the same.
Yeah. See, I guess I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same outcome, I think.
Yeah.
Let's still like more information of that parcel.
That's strange. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. That was four.
On five now, Sterling Meadows.
Okay, Sterling Meadows subdivision. Application. Connor, if you'll take us through that one.
Okay, so this is the Sterling Meadows subdivision. It's a request to create a 20-lot subdivision on 274.12 acres in the agricultural zone. I imagine you don't want me to read off the acreage of every single lot, so...
We've looked at it.
Lot 20 is the only one that'll be about 243.44 acres. Both properties are legal. They don't match the configuration they had in August of 2006, but some boundary line adjustments that are done, so they're still legal. The applicant provided proof of a water right with a sufficient amount of equivalent domestic units, which is 20. The applicant also provided a septic feasibility letter that said 20 building lots is feasible. In terms of stormwater, a stormwater report must be submitted to the Public Works Department for approval. Once that's been approved, infrastructure that meets the requirements can be constructed prior to plat approval. Prior to any construction, a land disturbance permit must be obtained. So roads and access, access to the subdivision is from 4,000 West and a pro... 4,000 West and a proposed public road. 4,000 West is an existing county road that provides access to residential and agricultural properties. It's classified as a minor local, has an existing width of 20 feet, a variable right-of-way, no paved shoulder, a one-to-two-foot gravel shoulder, a two-to-10-foot clear zone, and is paved. It's considered substandard as a right-of-way gravel shoulder and clear zone. The proposed road will have to meet the standards of minor local road, so 20 feet wide, a 66-foot right-of-way, zero-foot paved shoulder, four-foot gravel shoulders, 10-foot clear zone, and be paved. General requirement for that construction is that plans for all roadway improvements must be prepared by a licensed engineer and submitted to the Public Works Engineering Division for approval prior to construction. An encroachment permit must also be obtained before any work is performed in the county's right-of-way. There is going to be a restriction on lots 1, 2, and 3. Currently, there's no turnaround to the south of the subdivision on 4,000 West. That means these lots would be unable to receive essential services such as garbage and emergency services. So until turnaround is constructed to the south of the subdivision on 4,000 West, lots 1, 2, and 3 are not eligible for development, so no, it has to be added to the plat on that. There is a proposed bike trail on 4,000 West, and so the Trails Division requested that the applicant meet with them to get an easement. Cash County Fire District had no comments. However, they will have to work with the applicant in the future or with the fire district in the future in terms of future development. Again, applicant will have to work with waste management, so again, lots 1, 2, and 3 will be restricted due to that turnaround, lack of a turnaround. So they'll just have to work with them on that. There are quite a few sensitive areas on the property. So in terms of geologic hazards, there's fault lines, a surface rupture, study zone, and landslide risk. The applicant will have to write a geotechnical report for review by the county engineer. There's moderate slopes. That's a bit easier. Should the applicant develop in those areas, they do have to write a geotechnical report. If they don't, they don't have to worry about it. There's steep slopes, water bodies, wetlands. These areas are non-developable. They just have to make sure they follow county code on that. Noxious weeds, dires load, and scotch thistle have been reported on the parcels. The applicant has to work with the Vegetation Management Division to implement a noxious weed plan. The big issue is there's a high-pressure gas line that goes through the subdivision. It'll impact lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 18, and 20. A big concern is there's a proposed road that'll be constructed as part of this development. So a letter from Enbridge allowing the proposed infrastructure to be constructed over and across the existing gas easement must be provided to the Public Works and Development Services Department. Additionally, they provided some restrictions that have to be put on the plat. It should be at the bottom of your staff report. Notices were posted online in three public places and mailed to all property owners within 300 feet on May 23rd. Additionally, the agenda for the meeting was proposed, posted to the county website on May 23rd. At the time of the staff report, we hadn't received any public comments, but in the meantime, we received two.
Okay. Thanks, Connor. Any questions or thoughts on this, Commissioners? Is the applicant here that'd like to say anything? Okay.
My name's Tony Nielsen. We bought this property a couple of years ago, and we'd like to develop it, some of it. And so we've gone through the steps and checked off every box that we can do that and just looking for approval.
And you've gone through this Wellsville City, looking at annexation there, right?
Yes.
And they denied that, if I understand it right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that parcel, because you're not, you don't touch Wellsville City?
Correct.
There's a parcel in between here, maybe. I can't remember one or two.
Yes.
Yeah, they don't like to jump.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nielsen here, or Tony? Okay.
Thank you. Thanks.
Want to see if anyone from the public wants to comment or not?
Sure. Is anyone here from the public like to comment on this? Please come forward and state your name.
Do you have to open a public hearing?
No, because this isn't a public hearing. We just, people want to comment, they're just taking comments, so it's not an actual public hearing.
Because the notices went out, right?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Dan Youse, Y-O-U-S-E. I live in that neighborhood, 8043 South, 3600 West. From my home's back deck, we have a nice view of that property. Yogi Berra has a lot of great quotes, and one of his great quotes that I enjoy is, "This is deja vu all over again." The reason I say that is because Tony and Karen Nielsen came before this commission over a year ago for a 20-lot subdivision on this property. Only instead of the 274 acres, then when they came forward, it was going to be about 65, excuse me, 62.85 acres. It's still the same subdivision. That's why I say it's deja vu all over again. We developed, we, the neighbors, March 26, 2024. You all should have received a letter from us that was signed by 76 individuals. We all contested having the subdivision put there. We cited six sections in the Cash County general plan that the subdivision would violate. We discussed the importance of the major wildlife travel corridor, and there's a significant feeding area for protected avian species there. So even though this is a quote "new" subdivision with a new quaint name, Sterling Meadows, it's the same subdivision. The issues that were raised and discussed earlier about a gas line, excuse me, and being able to drive over that gas line, that's been discussed over a year ago. The 20 lots, if you look at the topography of that land, at that parcel, there are some steep hills there. I drove by it coming here tonight. Again, it's the same subdivision. There's 20 wells, 20 septic tanks. How's that going to impact my well? How's that going to impact the wells of people who signed that letter to you all over a year ago? Just looking at my notes. You may be aware of this. I don't know. It's the same subdivision they presented to the Wellsville City Council to be annexed. That was denied. Same subdivision they presented to Wellsville City Council to receive city water and city sewer to the lots. That was denied. The reason stated by Tony Nielsen at that particular hearing that I attended was because the neighbors were upset about us having 20 wells and 20 septic tanks. So they went to the city for the water and the sewer. I think it's disingenuous that they're now right back here in front of your plant, the Planning Commission, the Cash County Planning Commission, asking for wells and septic tanks. When all of this has already been denied, I'm happy to sign another letter. I sent you all an email yesterday stating my thoughts and my wife's thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mark Thompson. I'm a property owner to the north of this proposed subdivision. I'm actually here for the wildlife. I don't know if any of you are aware, but just less than 60 days ago, my wife and I, the county, Wellsville City, and the state of Utah spent several million dollars up Wellsville Canyon to protect open space, to protect water, and to protect wildlife. The wildlife corridors that come off of the Wellsvilles transfer underneath 89 and come to the east side of the highway, which is property owned by myself. The Neavs own some, a bunch of property there. Cooper's own property. Several landowners recognize that as protection of critical winter range for those wildlife. The final migration of those wildlife transferred down through what's called Lindley Basin, exactly where this subdivision is planned. Cutting off those wildlife that we just spent millions in part to protect to their final destination, to those dormant fields to the east, I would say we just shut off what we started upstream. I mean, I'm here for the wildlife, you don't ever see wildlife in the audience. They can't speak for theirself. But that is a known corridor, it was brought up by one of the other member, or one of the other folks that spoke. There is a beaten path that comes out of that canyon, right where that subdivision is proposed. The applicant himself, against the will of the divisional wildlife, fed elk in the basin this last winter, it was a mild winter. But from my location, I counted seventy head of elk on two mornings. What are we gonna do with those seventy head of elk in the middle of the subdivision? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Anne Glenn, I live across the street, slightly to the north of the proposed subdivision. That land that we've, has belonged to my husband's family for a hundred-plus years. And we have farmed that, his family, for all these years. We have a well, our only source of water on that land. And I'm very concerned about what's going to happen, twenty septic tanks, a quarter of a mile away from our only source of water. If that is contaminated, we are really going to be in a mess. I feel the same, I feel the same thing about Mark brought up, the wildlife. We happily look out our south window in the winter and watch animals come across our land every day. And it's a joy to watch them. We feel like something that has been tried and denied, and tried and denied, there might be some problems there. I feel like the Nelsens should be putting in, if they want to develop this land, they should put in a community water system, a septic system. Because I feel like that's the responsible thing to do. We also, our land, most of our land that is across the street from this development is in a conservation easement that we did, honey, how many years ago? Anyway, it's in a conservation easement that cannot be developed. And we feel like it's kind of a slap in our face to develop this land right across from where the we have been able to save that land from development. Those are just my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, I want you to deny.
Commission, neighbors, I'm Evan Glenn, I also am part of the family property across the street and appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns. I do have the similar concerns as my mother just spoke, concerns about water and the future of our water. We've heard similar with the gravel pit situation. Really, the only thing I wanted to add here, despite whatever decision is made and countywide, I encourage my neighbors to do thoughtful planning as far as active transportation when we do these types of developments. One of the things we're seeing in our neighborhood is lots of walkers on that road to where it's becoming an unsafe situation. And now we're gonna add potentially twenty-plus more homes. That needs to be addressed as we approve or deny these types of decisions. And then as well as if there is a subdivision made there, similarly, well-planned access and sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's comments.
Claire Cooper, I own land just over the hill from his, and all winter long, them elk are in my place, and they come over and go down into his. It's just wildlife. And then another thing is snow removal, stuff like that. Storm rainwater, where's it gonna be? And, you know, different things like that, it's gonna come pack stuff. Fire protection, we gotta have fire protection up there, you know, it's a big deal. Gotta have the roads and everything big enough and wide enough to go up in and out of there. Twenty homes and rainwater, you know, that's gonna run somewhere. And the wells and septic tanks, it's just gonna be tough. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said you had a question for?
Yeah, I have a question for you on the, it's been a while since my past life, working on some of those farms. Of the part that's gonna be developed, are those nineteen lots, what percentage of that is currently irrigated with that existing well that's on there?
I wouldn't know.
Okay, that's just, because for me the
It's all alfalfa.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think how, looking at that, trying to overlay it with the plat map you've got here on the, it looks like most of it's probably currently irrigated.
Of the picture, probably two-thirds is farmed
Yeah.
in that picture.
Okay, I was just trying to do a little calculation of how many acres are coming out of agriculture, going in development, right? Those water rights are what's transferred into those new lots and so the
And we have been approved from the state of Utah for water and everything.
The actual water use per area should stay the same or go down a little if people with water lawns are right. Okay, thanks.
Have you had any comments, or have you talked to Enbridge about the gas line going across out the road?
Oh, yeah.
And what have they said on that?
As long as we develop like our plan says, they're perfectly fine with it, and he's got the letter that they wrote.
That's all the questions I had on there.
Any questions on this?
You can saw it over there.
No, I don't, I don't know that I do.
I know you've got the water rights to do this, but the big concern is that the twenty wells, the twenty septic tanks, that's a big concern to everyone here. Because I live out on the south end, and I know those wells are continuing to have to go deeper for people to get water. It's a big issue, a big concern. What was the city's reason for denying you guys access to the water sewer?
Because we were not touching the city.
And so they wouldn't give you provision to still access that? Because that'd be the ideal situation.
You'd think so.
You've got the acreage, I mean, technically, you can get twenty-seven lots off that parcel with the current zoning. He's got the water rights, I mean, he'll have to meet all the road requirements, county code. So for me, it meets all the property rights that are associated with that, those two current parcels. And he'll have to meet all those, whatever there is, fifteen or sixteen seventeen conditions and two conclusions before it, before that. I would make a motion for approval based on those seventeen conditions and two conclusions. Crickets.
This is, torn on this one.
Yeah, I just look at it, he's, I mean, it's what that property came with as far as existing rights according to existing county code, and he can meet all those county codes.
I'll just make in order, look under U.S. Code as well, I'm looking at seventeen twenty-seven six oh four point one, sub K eight, sub eight. Preliminary subdivision application complies with the protocol county ordinances and the requirements of this section. And as treated by these authorities, shall approve the following subdivision application. So my interpretation now would be, checks all the boxes, you have to do it there. Now, there's gonna be some discussion or some question about things, something like that, then it would make a finding, recommend a finding on the record specifically what ordinance or requirement is not, that would justify that.
There weren't any found, they threw the review of anything that was missing, so I think according to code, there's, there's not even a choice on the matter.
Yeah, we can't say we deny it because it's a bad idea.
Oh, right. But what's your plan for, like, lots one, two, and three for the road access? Are you gonna do a frontage road along there? What's your plans addressing that issue?
We've just, I've met with Matt, and we've tried to figure it out. Until it gets fixed, we can't do anything with those three.
So maybe there'll only be seventeen lots in the end.
Was there a reason you didn't push it to twenty-seven lots versus twenty?
We were told that that twenty was the number that we could do. So we went with what the county code said.
Would that be because of the steep slopes get taken out?
Taken out, maybe.
No, so that would be taken out in the A-ten, I didn't think so either.
My motion stands.
Hey, do we have a second on the motion?
I'm waiting for Chris.
The hard thing is, it's, you know, it's, it does meet all the requirements by county code and ordinance, it's just
Going to that, we approve it. Whether you like it or not, if it meets it, we approve it.
If it helps, lot twenty is two hundred and forty-three acres, and that's where they're concerned about the wildlife. So that is still going to be very wildlife-friendly.
I will say, I mean, I know other folks feel differently. The clustering on this, you know, makes a big difference to identify lots that people are interested in buying. People don't really want ten acres, ten-acre lots or whatever. And so do you think, you know, concentrating that subdivision by the roads, by the main roads helps, you know? I still don't love it, but it could be a lot worse, I guess, is the point, right? We could have roads all over that property. We could have ten acre, you know, twenty-seven, ten-acre lots all around there, and that would not be as beneficial as this layout is, that's for sure.
No one, do you have any comments or thoughts on this from the council?
Well, as you know, I've sat on the planning and zoning for many years, and just like the rest of you, it's a tough thing. But we all stand here for property rights. Tony and Karen have property rights, we're just here to make sure that their property rights don't come at the expense of the other neighbors and everything else, which I don't think they do. So water, really, this commission nor the council has any decision or debate on water. That is left up to the state. So we can't weigh in on that very much. And I understand the people who talk about water, and I'm on a well, been on a well all my life, and so I echo those concerns about water. But at the same time, they can pump the well and use all those water rights to go into the ground, no matter what, so they've just portioned them over. So from that standpoint, they've met and solved the issue of water rights that we have so much on. I agree with Chris, at least they're next to the road and everything else, so the clustering helps in a way. It's tough, I mean, we're all living in this county, and growth is affecting us. But if we all sat back and said, where do we want our kids to live? We want them to live here. And so that just cancels out our thought of a nice, calm, wide-open space, but it's gonna become houses. And I'm a farmer, and I hate to say it, I appreciate all of those who have came and talked. But as Mr. Crane pointed out, you as a commissioner held to what we have as guidelines and policies, and if you step aside from that, what have we got to back it up with? And that's the big issue right now, so. It's, there's points on each side. So I'm glad I'm sitting on the council side today. I haven't liked sitting on the council side most times, because it really doesn't fit in, but here I sit, so.
It meets all the requirements.
Well, I keep looking at Chris, it's just too painful.
This will be one of the bigger subdivisions we've approved in a while.
It's very much so done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It meets everything.
It does.
Rock, rock, paper, scissors or something? Who has to get this?
Yeah, it's, it'll be tough for me, too. I think, you know, I have the distinct privilege of serving on the Cache Open Space Advisory Committee that has helped fund the projects that Mr., that Mark was talking about there. And so we'd love to see places like this conserve, that's for sure. Maybe that would be of interest to you at some point, but I know that that's not what you've proposed. So, but if developing this subdivision becomes too problematic, I would say apply for some open space funding and maybe consider that. Those are my side thoughts.
I echo that opinion, it's, it'd work out.
It would be fantastic.
With that, you'll second my motion?
I guess I will, since Val J. won't do it for us. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds like it, Val J.
It's just painful. But we're bound by, and it meets all the boxes. All we need to do is change it if, you know, I know.
Running out of room in the cities, we've got it built somewhere, unfortunately.
I know. Okay, item number six, Legacy Ranch Estate Subdivision. Connor, let's keep moving.
All right, so the Legacy Ranch Estate Subdivision requests to create a twenty-lot subdivision with an agricultural remainder in the A-ten zone. Once again, I imagine you don't want me to list off the acres of all those, and those are around five acres. There's one, a big one, that is thirty-four point two-eight acres, that's the agromainder. All properties are legal, some boundary line adjustments have happened, and there's a non-continuous split, but otherwise, they are legal. The applicant is in the process of acquiring twenty, the water rights for it, twenty equivalent domestic units. Right now, there's a change application in, and the applicant is under contract to purchase the water once that's gone through. The applicant provided a septic feasibility letter that states twenty building lots and an agromainder are feasible, or is feasible. Storm waters, so a stormwater report must be submitted to the Public Works Department for approval. Once that's been approved, infrastructure that meets the requirements and shall be constructed, right, a plat approval. Prior to any construction, a land disturbance permit must be obtained. Access to the subdivision will be twenty-four hundred west, thirty-two hundred west, and a proposed public road that connects the two. Twenty-four hundred west is an existing county road that provides access to residential and agricultural properties. It's classified as a minor collector, however, it'll need to meet the standards of a major local road. It's twenty-two feet wide, has a variable right-of-way, has a three-foot pavement. Um, it's twenty-two feet wide, has a variable right of way, has a three-foot paved shoulder, a seven-foot gravel shoulder, a fourteen-foot clear zone and is paved. Um, is considered substandard as a right of way paved shoulder. Thirty-two hundred west is an existing county road that provides access to residential and agricultural properties. Um, it's classified as a minor local. He's nineteen feet wide, has a variable right of way, has no paved shoulder, a two-foot gravel shoulder, a ten-foot clear zone and is paved. Um, is considered substandard as the width, right of way, paved shoulder, gravel shoulder and clear zone. Um, is considered fair as the material. Um, the proposed road needs to meet the requirements of a minor local road, so this means twenty feet wide, sixty-six foot right of way, two-foot gravel shoulders and must be paved. Um, some general requirements related to that is plan for all roadway improvements must be prepared by a licensed engineer. And then those plans have to be submitted to the Public Works Department Engineering Division for approval prior to construction. Um, additionally, they'll have to do an encroachment permit prior to any work performed in the county's right of way. Um, Cash County Fire District did have a request that requires an emergency access between lots eleven and twelve. Um, this emergency access must be recorded via easement and shown on the final plat. Um, additionally, any future development will need to be reviewed. Um, the applicant will have to work with waste management, uh, to handle trash. Um, in terms of sensitive areas, there is a geological hazard on there. Um, there's a fault line and a surface rupture study zone. Um, the applicant has to provide a approved geotechnical report for review by the county engineer. Um, there is a section corner, um, should any work come within thirty feet of that section corner, they gotta reach out to the Public Works Department and coordinate. Um, canals, there is a canal on the property, um, to make sure to meet setbacks and if there's any work around there, definitely work with the canal company. Um, notices were posted online to three public places and mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet on May twenty-third. Additionally, the agenda for the meeting was posted on the county website on May twenty-third. At this time, at the time of writing, there wasn't any, uh, public comments, but I think one has been received now.
Okay. Alright, thanks Connor. Commissioners, any questions for Connor? Okay, is the applicant here? Would they like to make a comment?
My name's Spencer Butterfield. Um, I guess I don't really have a comment other than just wanted to introduce myself, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We basically bought this. We, we're building like a cow facility here. Uh, we love this piece and, uh, but we just, it's really expensive and the only way we can kind of afford it is to do a little bit of this. We hope to sell as little as possible, but we have carved out lots for our own family on this as well, so. But yeah, I think we hit all the requirements, so if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Anyone here would like to make a comment that received a notice? Please come forward and, yeah, state your name.
Hi, I'm Mandy Gockner. I live on sixty-five hundred south. And I haven't seen the plan, so I don't know, um, if I'm for or against it yet. Um, as a.
The plan and put it up there on the.
As a neighbor, I would say, you know, no, I'm against it. I didn't think we'd see development here for another fifty years, but, um. I don't want to be a NIMBY and I am a licensed landscape architect in the state of Utah. Um, I work for a firm out of Salt Lake and I work on projects all over Utah, but, um, several primarily in Wasatch and Summit County. So I am here just advocating for sound planning principles. You only get one chance to get it right and when our street was developed, the developer threw in a quick, cheap road and. Um, unintended consequences maybe, I don't know, maybe he just wanted to line his pockets with as much money as possible. But we as neighbors are left to deal with this road and it's, it's been a headache, honestly. Um, we. Um, have an HOA only because we have to deal with this road. And I've had neighbors throw out speed bumps and I've had neighbors with, um, radar guns. And I've had neighbors purposely driving five miles an hour in front of me, making me go super slow because I don't agree with the speed bumps and. Also, I've seen, like, there's all kinds of things that are going on with, um, ATVs and things that I'm liable for. Because we aren't under the county's jurisdiction as far as the road, because our HOA manages this road. And I know this isn't an issue with this development, but this is something, like, I see this as a potential opportunity to maybe make things right. If we could work with this development and our road, um, I would love to not have to have that each away anymore. I would love to have that dissolved personally. But there are, um, a lot of things I look at, um, for this development as far as like, why do we love Cash County? What do we love about our valley and how can we preserve that as we develop? Um, there's just a few things I want to bring up that I would love for the, I don't know if the county is already addressing this or not, but, um. There are at least half the people on my street, I think, are relying on one of our neighbors to bring his tractor over and plant his. Plant and, and, and do the farm work for their fields. So I don't know when people buy a five acre lot, if they're aware of those kinds of things that they are, they're gonna have to deal with. Are they gonna be able to buy a thirty thousand dollar tractor? Are they gonna be able to know when to plant and, um. All, all of those things that go into like the farming, the cost of farming and the education with that and the invasive species, uh, we are seeing a lot more of the, um, dire's woad in our area. And I don't know if, who knows about it? Who knows that this is an invasive species or is it just a pretty yellow plant? And then also like, is, does the county have a dark sky ordinance? I don't know. I've never heard of it. Um, but I would love to see a dark sky ordinance. It's a very simple thing to just be intentional about the lights that we're selecting. For our homes so that we can still see the stars at night. I love being able to see the stars where I live. Um, there's so many things I love about where I live and I, I, I can share that. I can be a good neighbor. Um, another thing to think about is it is the well water. I know that's an issue. I trust that the state has done the studies necessary. To, um, a lot well water to, you know, so that's there. I don't have to worry about running out of water, I would hope. Um, but my daughter did just do a science experiment on our well water. Um, straight from the well and also from our house after a filter and it came back really high in nitrates. We have five and a half acres and four horses. And I don't know that it's from our four horses or from a few lots down where there's a lot more animals, but that level of nitrates, she told me was, um, high enough to cause blue baby syndrome. I don't know anything about that. That's all, I've never heard of it before, but I just called and had an RO installed in, on our water. Um, today, actually, they came today and installed that. Um, so it's something to think about, is like the, the wells, the number of animals. Let's, let's think about this as a community, um, and what can we do at the county level to make sure, um, we're planning with good principles, okay? Um, Ben, I, I'm almost done. Last thing is, um, active transportation, um. I forgot his name. It starts with an E. Evan brought this up. I love, I love it. Um, so. There are a lot of people that are using these roads, um, for walking and running and mainly adults. I never see children out there, which is for the best, because it's really not safe. The road is wide enough for two cars. Um, I almost got in a head in collision once because there were two cars coming towards us and the one behind was going out and around a biker. And they didn't see us, but we almost had, it, there was almost a head-on collision and, um. Our, our kids really, like, they're stuck. They, they really can't go anywhere safely. So I really, like, we need to think about active transportation. If, even if it's not sidewalks, even if we're just, you know, we get a hundred people to go out with four-wheelers and make a dirt trail. Can we do that for the kids? Can we do that connection for the communities between Wellsville and Hyrum? Are we talking about the canal? Um, I know the canal's being enclosed. Are we talking about turning that into a trail? I just see a lot of opportunity for community connection and involvement and we get much better results when we do get the community engaged. So I don't know if there's ways that we can, um, get the community engaged with this process. Um. I would love to see that happen and. And yeah, that's all I had to say, but we only get one chance to get it right because our development, like, we're dealing with. A lot of, like, we, we have to manage our own snow removal and all these things and, um, I would love to just be neighbors with my neighbors and not have to do those things, so.
Comments?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Brock Bryson and I also live on the street with, uh, Mandy Gockner.
Is that, is that sixty-five hundred?
Yeah, sixty-five hundred south, yep. Yeah, we're like the second to the, we're bordering the, that's in our backyard. We all gotta live somewhere, so we get that. Um, I think, uh, the comment I'd like to make is, is we'd just like to have a, a good faith discussion about that road that we're on and, and see if there's some good planning that can be done. To, to make sure that that's maybe a throughway would probably be our suggestion and, and I don't know what that all looks like legally and, and, and all that, but we'd want to have that, uh, discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Nope, okay.
Maybe just a follow-up question for Mr. Butterfield. Um, just on the, sort of touching on that last comment, how, it looks like in, in your subdivision. Am I right that it, it allows, it will allow a connection there to that, for that sixty-five hundred to come through?
That's the, uh, request of the fire, just to have like an easement through there.
Okay.
So, yeah, and we, we'd probably be open to something if we need to work with HOA. I think our biggest concern is when we were having like the initial conversations. With Matt and just the whole staff was that if we have to improve that road, I don't think we're necessarily like super interested in doing all that, so, um, that's why we did that. But we can, I can speak with them and we can maybe talk to the HOA. I've talked with a few of those neighbors and they're actually not interested in doing that, so we just kind of left it alone, so. But if there's more people who want to talk about it, we can, we're happy to talk about it, so.
Yeah, because we have to maintain that road, whatever they're using it for. If that access is there, however, how are the people living there gonna use that road? We have to maintain it. And it's, it's like what, two inches of?
It could be better.
But that, but that one can't be tied to their approval.
Yeah, that's not.
I mean, they can, you can have the discussion, but we can't tie him to that because that's not his property.
Exactly, yeah.
Hey, I have a question too.
Sure, yeah, you bet.
So as I was reading this, staff came back and said that thirty-two hundred west is paved. I feel that's a long stretch of the word paved. It's chip and seal. So it is actually breaking up as we sit there right now, my own land next to it.
Right, yeah.
So you're fully aware that your property that borders thirty-two hundred west, you're gonna have to bring that up to county standards. And that would not meet with the chip and seal right now, right?
Uh, well, we talked about that and I think like what we decided is that it did meet those requirements. We just had to extend our easement. So I guess maybe that's something for Matt to, or whoever's supposed to go out and look at that, inspect it, but. To my understanding, it does meet the requirements for the minor, whatever it is.
My understanding, I'm just issuing caution.
Okay, cool, yeah.
Because I don't think it meets standards for the county at this point for that collection point in front of there. Because anybody else who builds in the county right now on a county road has to bring that road up to county standards with their property that borders that. Your property is boarding quite a bit of thirty-two hundred south, so I'm just saying for that same condition, you're gonna need to bring that up to county standards.
Yeah, I guess I just, yeah, that wasn't brought up, so.
Yeah, looking at, looking at the notes in here, it does show.
The report.
Yeah. It's the right of way, the, the shoulder and stuff that doesn't meet it, but they both show the paved on both roads are okay.
Yeah.
One says fair, but that's probably the one you're talking about.
Yeah, it's.
But it still meets it.
It's a pretty nice road, so I, I mean, I, it might be chip and seal, I guess, I don't, I'm an inspector, but I drive it every day and it, it's a pretty nice road, so.
Matt, would you like to make a comment on that road? On that thirty, thirty-two?
You can up here and. You gotta phrase it different.
Okay, Matt, Matt, will you make a comment on that?
Quite a few substandard, uh, notations.
First, first on the connection, when, when this came in, we had a discussion and, uh, as you guys have heard, that other subdivision adjacent to this, that road is private. So this road that he's building within his subdivision is public. So we didn't feel like that we could have a public road tie into a private road. You know, I don't think they want that through there either, but. We thought it would probably be a great idea for an emergency purposes or for fire or something that these guys provide an easement.
With probably something that doesn't allow free flow traffic through there, but that could probably be cut or taken down by the fire department or EMS. That could probably get those guys out and so that would give them a secondary heat arrest. And the applicant has been more than willing to help provide that access, so that will not be some kind of a public thoroughfare or anything, but. It also may allow some of those kids or something to have an easement where they could go to their neighbor's house, friend's house and not have to travel all the way around, um, to get to their house too, so. That's the part of that. Nolan does bring up a good thing. I think, you know, that, a lot of our roads are chipped, so that is something that's probably, he was probably giving very good advice that. If we go out there and that chip and seal is only like an inch thick, then the applicant would be, would be required to make sure that that thickness of that asphalt that's out there is three inches, so. Again, it's something, it is, it is a hard surface, it's not gravel and it's probably something the Public Works Department can do a little better is maybe. Try to make sure that the applicant is, you know, more aware of all those conditions. Generally, we're saying it needs to come up the county road. We're doing some quick looks, but, you know, in this case, that, that chip and seal is fairly new, so it's probably in good condition. But Nolan does have a point that that thickness at this point is unimpressed.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, and I, you know, just looking at the report, you know, it says for thirty-two hundred west, the travel lanes are substandard, so those will have to be widened. The right of way, of course, paved shoulder have to be included, gravel shoulder have to be included, clear zone will have to be included. So there's quite a few upgrades to that existing road, it looks like to me. So, just a FYI, right?
So a few months ago, we had a applicant come through right by Hyrum Dam and we denied it because they didn't have the water right secured. To me on this one, the water right, I know they're currently trying to purchase it, but it's not secured yet. It's, uh, in the process, so if that doesn't go through, that's a concern of mine, because we turned those applicants down because they didn't have their water right there.
Their, their bigger one for me at least, turning them down, is they didn't have the second access for more than twenty-six, is it twenty-six homes on the one road or twenty-five? They, they were over, how many homes could be on one road?
Yeah, it was only one access point.
Ten, two. Yeah, they were.
And technically, I guess it was continued.
Yeah, continued.
It was a continuous, yes, that's right, it was.
Yeah. Because the water right.
Yeah, thank you, it was a continuous.
The water right one, even if, even if this one doesn't get approved, right, there's enough groundwater rights for sale in Cash County. He could purchase another water.
But it's not purchased now, though.
Right, but he wouldn't, he wouldn't be able to do the development and, and start selling those lots until that's approved. So that, that's one of the conditions, right? He's, that, that would have to be approved before any, you can still get through the rest of that process, uh, not hold it up waiting for that transfer. If we were in a county that was in a, a really hard place to find a water right, right, I think that would be worth waiting on, but it's.
I think we're here.
It's, 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 if you, if you've got cash, you can get water in Cash County pretty easily.
The frustrating thing is if you move water from middle of this county to the south, that doesn't mean the water's magically there.
It, it doesn't, right, but our, but our latest, yeah, our latest, yeah, that's, that's the thing on water rights. We don't deny it based on that, because that's a water rights issue, not a planning commission issue.
Exactly.
Or a water.
But it's a big issue to everyone in this room, is water. Right?
That's for sure.
It's a huge issue.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's similar to the last one, right? He, he can meet all the, all the conditions according to existing county code. So, uh, as long as they do that, we approve it, so I would, I would recommend approval based on the sixteen conditions and two conclusions.
Matt, I got one more question for you before we go to that. So.
Yep.
I just live down the road from here. There's a canal bridge that's extremely narrow, so with the, with all these extra cars gonna be on the road. What's the county's viewpoint on the bridge of the canal?
You're talking on twenty-four hundred or thirty-two?
Thirty-two. I know twenty-four hundred's up for, up for, or upgrade this fall.
Twenty-four hundred.
But thirty-two hundred, it's narrow.
You're correct, and I think that's part of the struggles of growth in the county. Uh, we talk about this often, but. I don't think that this applicant necessarily is, you know, the cause of why that's so narrow. Does the traffic activate? Yeah, and so those are all safety concerns. And, you know, as a county, we're doing the best we can to address the safety concerns as we can. I don't know, you know, it. His impact on that is hard, you know, we work with the attorneys to try to make sure that any development that comes in is making sure that they're taking. Their fair share of the impacts and that we're getting what we can and then there's certain. their fair share of the impacts and that we're getting what we can, and then there's certain things we just can't exact from now, but yeah, that's one that's also on the list to try to make sure that we get improved, we try, we're trying to get all of those narrow crossings and safety hazards in those areas taken care of, and it's just a funding issue at this time, so.
Okay. No help, I just, I know when we add twenty more homes, it's gonna make that road very dangerous.
I guess on that, those were all on part of our list of things that we were hoping to get, some of the funding that we did get, and so we took out funding as far as we can, so if we can find more funding through grants, through other types of things, those, there's a lot of those projects that are basically shovel-ready and we can move them forward, so.
Okay.
Do we need to extend the meeting?
We do need to extend the meeting. Gosh, it's eight o'clock. All right, I have a motion to extend the meeting.
How many items do we have left?
We have quite a few, we probably better go-
Three?
Thirty minutes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to extend it to eight-thirty.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, now I'll re-up my motion to-
Okay.
Approve this based on the sixteen conditions and two conclusions, finding that it, it meets all current county code issues, I mean, there's some things you have to do to, to upgrade stuff, but it, it meets all the conditions we have set in the county, so I don't see any glaring reason we would deny it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Baljeet's turn now.
It is.
It's really hard to see these developments go through in this open space, it's really challenging, but again, we have property rights. Supersede that.
Trump's our people's.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
Painfully.
Painfully? That's right.
Maybe just one comment before, before we vote, and Mr. Butterfield, I'm not trying to say that, uh, I, I know better than you, of course, but the, in the county, we have quite a few subdivisions that we've approved that are the five to ten acre lot sizes or whatever, and they're not selling, and, and maybe this will be different, you know, it's a different location, that sort of thing. So I just, you know, hopefully that doesn't become a challenge for you, but I know we've been doing this long enough, I've seen quite a few of that, and folks find it hard to maintain five and ten acre lots, so, anyway, that's my two cents worth. Yeah, argument for smaller lots and clustered and less roads.
Well, the, the hard thing too, the other thing, just my soapbox would be like, you know, if there's, yes, they have property rights to come and put these wells in, but what about everybody else's property rights that have existing wells, you know, it's, and I know this isn't a water meeting, but it's a, it's a real concern about property rights for others.
Until the state changes the law, the law is if your well goes dry, you gotta go deeper, that's, that's the water rights take on it currently. Which is again, outside of our realm.
It's outside of our realm, but yeah, it's just, it's just a issue that I'm torn on. Okay, so do we have a?
A motion in the second.
A motion in the second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along.
That's really horrible, isn't it? It's just awful.
Crowd's getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah.
I'm gonna run, take this, thirty-second break, you can keep going.
Okay.
I'm taking a break too.
Man, that is just tough, isn't it?
Yes.
I hate seeing that, I just, it's just so painful.
It is.
It's my backyard.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Oh, it's just painful. You know, I, I own about a hundred and eighty acres and I wanna keep that open space, I'm gonna come talk to you and see if I can sell those things, 'cause I want my kids and grandkids to enjoy that forever, I hate it.
Well, I didn't wanna editorialize, but I, I will go take care of those lots.
I won't either.
Anymore, because, you know, they come over and they ask, they're really nice neighbors, and the first time you run a bike through the swather and-
The dog?
And-
Had that happen?
And a railroad tie, and, and they put their re survey mark. It cost me thousands of dollars, and I said, no, I'm done, I won't. I won't do it.
Right, right.
And so the re-packs, just 'cause nobody else will either.
And that's a liability, it's huge.
Nobody, yeah, nobody has the small equipment, you know, to, to do those small lots either.
They don't wanna go spend fifty, sixty thousand or something, all equipment to do it, or more, it's just tough. Yeah, my neighbors are not gonna like me, but, well, it's the law, that's the code.
I don't know, I don't know what else you'd-
Yeah, it's just what you do.
That's what the law is.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, it says shall, it doesn't say may.
All right.
Can we go on without?
Yeah, we can, 'cause we won't take a vote before you.
All right, Angie, thank you, can you go on with the Beaver Creek Loop, CUP?
I will do my best to.
Okay.
Uh, the Beaver Creek Loops conditional use permit is a request to construct, um, three loop trails, a total of approximately four miles, of publicly accessible, non-motorized multi-trail on target property. Uh, the, the property itself has the existing Beaver Creek law on it, uh, which has its own separate CUP, we're processing this one, um, not as an amendment to that, but just a, a separate CUP given that it's not directly affecting the function or operation of the lodge, and the trails are openly intended to be a small part of a larger trail network connecting, uh, Cache and Rich. Uh, so further letter of intent, um, the Beaver Creek Loops trails are intended for beginner and early intermediate level trail. So it will for families, individuals with limited mobility and recreational users seeking accessible outdoor experiences. Uh, so designing the trails for beginner, early, intermediate skill level also allows those new trail users, um, to gain experience and confidence without conflict with advanced users feeling threatened or overwhelmed. Uh, as mentioned, it's a, an initial step in what is hoped to be a more connected trail network in Logan Canyon, or Logan Canyon. Logan Canyon, um, the applicant and property owner has been working in collaboration with the Cache Trails Alliance, CPA, uh, the Beaver Creek Trails Foundation, and the Beaver Creek Lodge to expand trail opportunities in the region. Uh, so there's three loops that are shown in the staff report. Loop one, which is in green, is about a half-mile loop, designed to be used by novice cyclists and suitable for young children with riders that have bikes. Uh, that will focus on gentle slopes and flat runouts, uh, and it's which can be used for naturally slowing down without the use of brakes. Uh, loop two, shown in blue on the west side of the highway, is about one twenty-six miles in length, connects to loop one, designed more for beginner and early intermediate users, focusing on smooth surfaces and little side slopes. Uh, the third loop is on the east side of US eighty-nine, uh, approximately one and a half miles in length, and designed for early intermediate users. Uh, this loop goes through terrain that is more forested and contains more side slope, uh, some natural obstacles such as rocks and tree roots may be left to promote skill development. Uh, after the design work is done and CUP is approved, uh, construction will actually take a moment, a month and a half. Uh, the trails will vary between twenty-eight to thirty-two inches in width, uh, and between three and eight percent slope, with the eight percent being more on the east side there. Um, no structures are proposed as part of this project, and there's no mention in the letter of intent for large events, competition, or special met tech use, so those are specifically prohibited unless they come back for amendment. Uh, once constructed, um, Cache Trails Alliance will oversee future trail maintenance, uh, ensuring the sustainability of the trail network. It will become part of their Aqua Trails program, where every year, um, two to three volunteers each will be assigned for the season to maintain that trail. Uh, so the trails will be open to the public during daylight hours, seasonally after the snow has melted and the ground dries up until winter conditions begin again. Uh, there are two existing non-winter parking areas on the site that, per the applicant, can accommodate about seventy-five vehicles. Um, they're separate from the Beaver Creek Lodge guesting employee areas, so it won't be a conflict there, or a double difference. Uh, revised by plans with more detail, the parking area are a condition of approval. Uh, fire would like to see, um, how emergency access is going to be met there. Again, just confirming that there is an adequate number of parking spaces, so an analysis will need to confirm that as well. Uh, so the entire project disturbs less than acre ground surface, um, so UDOT helped them prepare some environmental documents, um, as part of this, and issued a memo that due to the limited scope of disturbed ground, stormwater pollution prevention plan is not required. Uh, when we look at conditional uses, we wanna make sure that they comply with the law, health, safety, welfare, added service provision, impacts mitigation, uh, and the proposed use is described in the letter of intent, but the conditions of approval proposed, uh, meet those standards for recreational and will not cause unrateable risks to safety of persons or property, uh, or any growth of lawful use of surrounding properties. Um, access is off Highway eighty-nine, which is a UDOT road. Uh, UDOT has expanded turn lanes on Highway eighty-nine onto, uh, the private road of Beaver Creek Lodge in both directions. Uh, as I mentioned before, UDOT's been instrumental in reviewing, claiming its support, um, the NEPA assessment for this project, obtaining a technical exemption, uh, and no mention was made during that analysis of any improvements that would be required due to an uptick of users. Uh, sensitive areas, uh, obviously it's in forest recreation, there are a number of, uh, steep slopes and that, um, but where the trails hoops are located, um, that will be outside of any special assessment requirements, and our code allows for prior removals and recoils, including trails in steep slopes, with changes made in the last year or two and a half. Uh, no public comments have been received regarding the proposals, so staff is recommending approval of those conditions.
Thank you, Angie.
I have a question.
Okay.
So talk to me about the east side trail. I'm wondering if we have parking on Beaver Creek side, all we're asking to do is have people walk across eighty-nine ninety-one and cause issues, so when you talk about a CUP and we gotta mitigate, um, safety, how are we doing that on the east side?
Yeah, applicants could talk more about this, but I think there's a parking area already on the east side, uh, because there's a horse rider.
Horse rider right there.
Right, but there's no turn lanes or anything for that one?
There is.
There, yeah, there's no turn like that.
To the horse parking plot?
Yeah, it's the middle turn lane. The center turn lane.
So Matt, who does any kind of traffic study or anything on something like this, so what are we looking at, is UDOT gonna do that, or I'm just wondering?
So, UDOT, fully.
Mark, did you wanna come up?
I mean, that's the longest trail, isn't it? It's one point four and the other is point five.
One, 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 six is the other.
So they're very close.
Yeah, similar.
Ten point five.
So part of the doors-
Genesis, I'm Mark Smith, um, just a brief introduction, we purchased the lodge, we just finished our fourth winter season up there. Lundalls, uh, anyway, so the, the process of this, we had the Office of Outdoor Recreation up there, retreat that they did, and we're talking about this whole piece of, when I'd be a creek, or when I'd be a mountain, did their system, and we're also in very preliminary discussions with state lands that are on the border, some in order to longer term with Forest Service on the south, but get your answer, part of the funding of this is coming from the grant from the Office of Outdoor Recreation, which is federally funded grant, and UDOT, um, was fully involved in the full approval of all of this, uh, because of the federal funds that came, so they, they worked, we hired consultants, Cache Trails Alliance ran most of that. They did studies of everything for Mark, I mean, we had to do some NEPA, it wasn't a full-fledged NEPA, because it was on private land, not Forest Service land, but, um, so they, I mean, they didn't bring any concerns to the fact that our operation already crossed this road in UTV travel, horse travel. Um, yeah, I'm not saying that it's not gonna increase the, the throughput that's worth the crossing of that, but I, that's really all I have to say.
How many can park on the horse side now on the east side right now, do you know?
Excuse me?
How many parking spots are on the?
It's not, it's not large.
No.
Uh, probably-
How many?
Twenty cars.
Twenty cars.
I'm just hoping we don't have an issue like we have at Windcaves.
No.
I mean, parking on the highway and everything else, 'cause this is gonna be popular, and I agree with it, I'm just wanting that safety mitigation to be discussed heavily on the CUP.
Been busy with, with you about this, I mean, the regional one director, I mean, they've all acknowledged that there's a lot of traffic that is continuing to go across there, and that's one of their potential points for one day to do an underpass of the freeway, but it's not, it's not, and their five-year outlook hasn't broken down.
So how close, well, it doesn't get very close to the under, underpass, it's up at the top almost.
No.
So ways away from that, yeah.
Yeah.
Have to be a new one.
It's a big safety concern, isn't it?
More construction in the canyon, I hate that.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
Yes.
Parking as well, I mean, winter base is even more hard activity.
Okay, I think it's neat, but I just wanna watch that safety thing for.
I had one, one question of where you came up with the calculations that it would be under an acre, so it wouldn't need the stormwater permit?
Well, if we do the, if we do the calculation of three and a half miles a trail- Correct.
And your construction, you say that'll be, some places it might be twenty feet while you're getting it built.
Right, so the-
Well over-
Understanding of the, of the, of the consultants that we used on the SWP P D on this one, Mark, they interpret that as, listen, we're disturbing twenty feet at a time, and so that's what they did their calculation.
Yeah, I don't think that's the way we would interpret it in the county for a conditional use permit.
It isn't.
During the construction.
Yeah, you're gonna have the whole thing, yeah, you're not gonna do twenty feet and then totally stabilize it, I mean, it's-
Wait for it to re-vegetate.
Right, but, but the whole thing, you're gonna do it all in a couple months, right, the whole trail system?
They break, but it's literally, I mean, from clearing the initial safety brush and most of this area.
Right, but, but the way we would see that is it's, it's a project, right, you're building a house, you're clearing the ground, you build the house. So I think under the county's interpretation, you're gonna need a stormwater permit for that, 'cause it's gonna be well, well over an acre of disturbance for that construction season.
Yeah.
So UDOT, again, UDOT was the one that ran that entire city, whether we needed it or not.
What is your standpoint on that for the stormwater, for legals?
Thank you.
If I'm understanding correctly, I was just doing something, I'm sorry, I didn't, I can't, so UDOT's saying, hey, don't need the stormwater permit, 'cause they're under an acre, whatever, county's interpretation is probably based on-
I, I guess we can ask Public Works, but my calculation is if, if we're doing a construction project on three and a half miles of trail that at some place could be, I just did it at three and a half feet wide, and we're still an acre and a half.
Yeah.
So I think we're gonna be well over two acres of disturbance.
'Cause if it was be, be a county, it would issue the stormwater permit too, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, they gotta go through the, the process, and be inspected by the county stormwater inspector.
So how does UDOT, how did UDOT come into that again?
I think their, their, it sounds like their consultant said that since they were doing it twenty feet at a time, it would never be over an acre, and that to me seems like a way around the stormwater permitting requirement.
So, yeah, but ultimately this parcel will be governed by county requirements, kind of codes, if it's a county, it would say you wouldn't need that, and it was, you gotta go with the county's.
Yeah, I think that, we'll have to add that as one, one of the conditions.
That was the, yeah, that's the only thing I-
Yeah, me too, the rest of it looks good, but I thought anyone else that does this, I couldn't get under the acre, I can see how you got there with that interpretation, but I think with the county rules-
We went back to them and pushed on this, because it was initially raised by-
Yeah.
By their office, and we, we went back and I said, listen, we've been doing this for twenty years, and we get these permits all over the place, and our, and our actual disruption of land, I know it doesn't sound like it, and I, I haven't built trails either, we're relying upon them, they're saying we are a twenty-foot, twenty-foot parcel from literally the, the clearing to the small little cap that they use, uh, to the people that come behind, anyway.
Yeah, I think the overall, I think we'll have Matt come up in a minute to make sure, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to have that stormwater permit in there to be able to approve that.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty easy to get, I mean-
Some paperwork and implement your best management practices.
And the inspectors are gonna come up a couple times and check on VMPs, and, yeah, it's not, I think it's like-
Make sure you re-vegetate your disturbed areas that aren't, you know.
I don't know, maybe they could use a tonka truck and keep it at three feet, you know, stay in there.
Even if, they gotta go down to two and a half to keep it under, under an acre.
Well, two and a half foot.
It is, it is a specialized cap that they use just for trail building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not-
Very small and compact.
It's not those four feet wide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, in, in my professional life, I designed trails and helped clients, local governments get through the process and everything, and um, yeah, this is, this is a typical requirement for- for, for any of these projects that are like this, so.
Any other questions? The applicant?
Might be one of our easiest CUPs we've done.
Yeah, because we love trails, don't we?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Do you want to ask if anybody else has comments?
Any other comments?
Not many left, most of our people have left us now.
Matt, do you want to?
I'll just add a little something, honestly, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit more to the, the parking and safety situation, so right now.
State, state your name first.
Allison Ward, Cash Trails Lines, but, you know, just bigger than the road, maybe, you know, not even a quarter of a mile, is the sink hollow or the stock hollow of Trailhead, where people are constantly crossing the highway right there as well. And so when we're thinking about a larger kind of safety issue that is also on UDOT's radar, is that there needs to be parking lots on both sides. So we're even hoping that west parking lots can stay, or right now, the west parking lots could be used for the west side trails, and the east side parking lots will be used for the east side trails. So we are thinking about this as, you know, moving forward, and then we are working with the SITL group to put more trails on that north side of the highway, sorry, I have a piece of my butt, so I'm worrying to myself. There will be more additional parking that will be built at some point on the north side, so that will also be that trail that's on the east side of the highway, yeah, because that's east, because like, that's where I started getting.
And I appreciate that, because I'm a snowmobiler, and I've come across that highway and I almost feel like George on Seinfeld doing the Frogger trying to get across.
No, it's scary, it's scary, I mean, it, you know, you see people, yeah, like, and in the summer, I think it's even, even worse, as people are going back and forth to Fair Lake, and you see bikers and hikers going across the road right there. I think it's scarier actually down by the Beaver turnoff, you know, more so than toward Beaver Creek Lodge, and so if we can push UDOT to do that underpass, the, the scene is better for sure, so, anyway, just wanted to add a little bit more context, so, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd be happy to make a motion if we're ready.
I think we're ready.
So.
Minutes left.
Yeah. I would make a motion that we approve the Beaver Creek Loops conditional use permit with the, we have eleven conditions and two conclusions, do we need to add one condition for the? Okay, so number twelve condition would be to require a notice of intent.
Matt's waving his hand back there.
Oh, come on up.
Come on up, Matt.
We didn't even have to ask him this time.
He volunteered.
So, the county code says anytime you disturb more than five thousand square feet, that you need a land disturbance permit.
Yes.
For that land disturbance permit, based on what they submit, the amount of land disturbance, then that alone will govern what process they, whether that's just an erosion control plan, whether that's a full SWIP, whether that's an NLY, and those types of things.
Okay.
So the condition that requires them to get a land disturbance permit would take care of those issues that were done.
Cover everything.
Okay.
Have a zone cleared, we got that, so nine's in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like they feel like we're covered, so I can just go back to the clean motion of approval with the eleven conditions and two conclusions then.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think Chris is head nodding earlier, he meant they really need stormwater permit.
Okay. All right, item number eight, the FL one fifty gas line replacement project CUP.
Okay, so this is the FL one fifty gas line replacement conditional use permit. It's a request to install an eight-inch natural gas distribution pipeline. Essentially what they're doing is there's old four-inch pipeline out there, so now they're just updating it to replace just where and here. This qualifies as a use type five-six-one-oh utility facility distribution. Basically qualifies as the gas pipeline, the transmission pipeline, less than two inches in diameter. The parcels do not match configuration they had on August eighth, two thousand and six, but just because some boundary line adjustments were done, so they're still legal. It's usually a basic agricultural residential, with more agriculture to the north of the project, and more residential to the south. Important to note is that the project is directly adjacent to Wellsville City. The question description, so about three-fourths of a mile of pipeline will be installed, and there will be three above-ground, or above-ground testing stations will be constructed. The only equipment that'll be on site is what's necessary for maintenance. Signage will be limited to just markers showing where the pipeline is located. Waste, in terms of during construction, all waste generated will be removed from the property. During operation, waste generation will be very minimal, and will be removed at the end of any maintenance work done. And there will be no full-time employees as part of this operation, the only time employees will be on site is for maintenance, repair, and repairs. Easements, they do have easements for most of the property, the only one that they don't have easement for is eleven ninety-four eight, so one of the conditions is they'll need to go get that easement completed and recorded, and just submit a copy of that recording to us. Land disturbance, part of construction, the applicant must obtain a land disturbance permit. They have obtained that already, it's just Land Disturbance Permit two thousand and twenty-five fourteen. Parking typically uses under use index five thousand would require a parking analysis, but this particular use type is exempt from that. Cash County Fire District had no comments. In terms of detrimental effects, air quality is concerned, just in terms of dust getting kicked up, so they just had to ensure the best management practices are followed. The notice is posted online, posted to three public places, and mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet on May twenty-third, and the agenda for the meeting was posted with the county whip said on May twenty-third. No public comments have been received at the time of writing the report. Part of the actual staff application, as well as making your comments, in terms of annexation, they don't have any issues with it, so that's.
All right, thanks, Connor.
Looks like two easy CUPs in one night, we're getting.
Yeah.
I'd agree.
He's rolling.
Motion to direct a man for approval with six conditions and three conclusions.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I was thinking of CUP, I've never done one. Thank you.
Wait for three hours, you can.
That's my payoff.
That's your payoff, yeah.
You want to be the end of the agenda, agenda next time.
Be careful, don't tempt mother nature by saying areas.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Connor, how long do you need to go over the honey sour code amendment?
Fifteen minutes on there, just so we got a good discussion about it. Kind of just depends on you guys, if you guys have noticed anything, basically we're just hoping for some feedback from you, and we're hoping to raise back the planning commission for an actual vote next month.
Okay.
That's the hope, so, any feedback would be fantastic.
Hey, should we make a motion to extend the meeting, fifteen minutes?
Sure, I'll make that motion, go to eight forty-five.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You get quieter.
The AC's working good in here.
That's nice.
Should have brought a jacket, I mean, it's getting to be kind of cold in here.
Angie did that on purpose.
I think so.
Just so we would stay awake.
Sixty-seven.
Must be sitting under the van.
Yeah, this is Cole, he's our representative for solar power. The basics of what we did is we added some definitions to section seventeen oh seven oh three oh on use-related definitions. So what we're proposing is utility facility commercial solar and utility facility battery storage, and there's also five other definitions in there, just kind of covering some basic terms as part of solar power. Past that, what we decided to do was add utility facility commercial solar and battery storage to seventeen oh I oh three oh. Basically, if an applicant came in and wanted to do this type of project, they'd have to get a public infrastructure overlay and rezone down there. And then past that, we decided to create a new chapter, so it'd be seventeen twelve commercial solar and battery storage facilities. The general requirements are basically the property shall be rezoned through the county rezon process, prior to any project going on at all. The design standards, minimum lot size for commercial solar, commercial solar and battery storage should be no less than forty acres, the maximum height of structure would be thirty-five feet, minimum setback for all structures is fifty feet from exterior property lines or easements. On the interior property line, that being the line between two or more parcels involving the project's share, will not have any setback requirements, so basically there's two parcels that can be built, there won't be any setbacks between those two parcels necessarily. Visual appearance, solar powered plant buildings and accessory structure shell, to an extent reasonably possible, using materials, colors, textures, the one facility in the existing environment. We do have questions on that one, just in terms of.
How do you, how do you blend solar panels, panels? When I read it earlier, I thought, that's a.
That's a.
I think green ones or brown ones, right?
That's an odd blend.
I can comment on that. Yeah, I do have a question on that, but, so it would just be solar panels as O and M buildings.
Yeah.
And the battery facility boxes.
Yep.
Someone, I remember meeting with someone in the county a few years back, they suggested it looked more like farming facilities, like farms. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, it was more of the overall facility to me. I, I didn't see how you're going to blend that. I think the buildings could be.
Sure. So, yeah, that, that's the one question I had on that, is like, is it in there? I mean, how do you define it, but not a bad thing to have in there for future projects as well.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it would be a conditional use permit, right? So, yeah, so the group that's up here will get to decide what doesn't look good.
Depending on where it's at.
Yeah.
So are you good with D, no glare?
Um, like, no glare that bothers, like, neighborhood properties, yeah, I would do glare analysis, that's generally something we do, and there's not a lot of the way.
Cool.
And when you think of, like, a solar facility with glare, you think of, like, Vegas with the mirrors and stuff, that's not what this is.
Yeah, so that leads me to one of the questions I had, so I, I noticed we, we had included a definition for the concentrating solar thermal power systems, but then I don't see that referred to anywhere else, I didn't notice it, maybe it is in here somewhere? But, so my question was, why do we have that definition in there for that?
Basically, the idea behind that is just firmly define what it is, so someone came in trying to say, oh, hey, this isn't that, you can say, here's the definition, it's not a permitted use type, you can't do it.
Okay, so it's not, I, I shouldn't be concerned that it's potentially opening the door to that kind of?
No, it's trying to slam the door shut.
Okay, that's, that's, that's why I was asking, right? So, yeah, that, that makes, and the other question I had was, is, is there a relationship for the maximum height on structures for thirty-five feet? Is that more for, for a building or more for a panel?
Yeah, that wouldn't be enough facility at all, it's, I don't know if that's just a capping it.
We might just pick, pick the number, it wasn't, didn't necessarily relate, so, I mean, I, I would.
Seventeen ten, so.
Is that, is that a typical, is that our maximum height for, like, buildings, residences, or whatever? Okay.
What about the minimum lot size of forty acres?
So that's just kind of based on composting facilities, something like that, solid waste facilities? The minimum requirement there is forty acres. You, you could argue it's a little bit just kind of pulled out of the habit, that's just kind of keeping in mind with code, if you have a recommendation on that.
Does this guy know how many acres you need to make it profitable, or?
I think, I think the comment on that, I think forty acres is a good size to say, okay, is it utility scale, or is it more a community solar facility, which could be a completely different thing in code. So I think having a minimum size might not be a bad idea for the county to have there. Whether or not forty acres is the number, I won't come up on that, but that's a really small facility, it's forty acres.
For, for a commercial facility?
For commercials.
Yeah, okay.
Generally, you're looking at about ten acres of megawatt, is kind of what we start with. It can be a little smaller than that, but generally try to lease something around that length, so you're looking at a much smaller project.
What's, what's your, what's a sort of the minimum megawatt size you would do on a project or something?
So for this project, we're looking at a hundred and fifty megawatts.
Right.
So, you know, at, at the end of the day, you lease more than you end up building on, but it would be a lot more than forty acres.
Yeah, yeah.
So the legislature had this discussion, you know, the last session, about sizing and stuff, because what they found, especially down Enterprise, Cedar City, out, out that direction, some of those big farms have gone in on all their pivot corners and put in small solar, little, I don't know, array is the right term, but anyway, in their pivot corners, but because of definitions, they almost fit the commercial size, and so if you're putting, if, if we put this in here, minimum forty acres, then they could be, they could be putting those in, in a, in a dry pivot corner to supplement their power, because they, because it starts, and, and maybe we just need to define commercial.
Yeah, I mean, would those be used for, like, that farm itself?
Individual use.
Yeah, I mean, they're offset.
Use type for that, basically. Uh, this is kind of saying, like, almost differentiating it, that's the goal there. So like, if you look at, I think there is a specific definition for a smaller scale, like, what you put in a pivot corner kind of do. This is kind of saying, oh, you have to be, the requirements would go above that.
Well, but, but there, they got a hundred and forty pivots down there, and so you start putting on all those pivot corners, they're all different parcels, you know, if, we just need to be a little flexible on the, on the definition there, so that they can do that. And they're, they're doing it because they're trying to save water, because their aquifer is compromised, and so they're trying, as part of their management plan, they're trying to reduce their water use, so they're not watering those areas.
It's not a bad idea, I mean, it seems like a pretty efficient use.
Is Rocky Mountain Power Pacific Core, isn't there a commercial definition of megawatt bigger, or is it two megawatts, something like that?
I'm not sure the exact megawatt, but, yeah, it'd be something like that. It has to be a two megawatt.
I have a question for Jason. Jason, have you reviewed all this as far as the battery stuff and everything from the fireside?
Yeah, they sent me some information a few months ago, but we talked tonight, and he wants to come and visit with us and sit down and talk more about.
So you can have this refined by the next planning and zoning commission? So that you're comfortable, because I want the fire department comfortable on that battery storage and everything else? Okay.
It's looking pretty good.
Yep.
Solid. Yeah, basically, everything past that, it's just kind of going through what the need to submit at the time of application. So analysis, clean glare plan, hazard management plan, a geosac report, sensitive areas analysis, then a site plan, would have to show location and dimensions of any proposed buildings or structures, locations of clearances, right of ways, easements, temporary easements, utility lines, existing water courses and drainage, location where site facilities connect to the main power grid, sensitive areas, property lines with names and tax, parcel tax identification numbers about adjoining properties, proposed ingresses and egresses, an operations plan that indicates traffic arrangements proposed on existing roads and streets adjoining the site, the location arrangement, dimension of facilities, and the onsite control of surface and stormwater drainage. There's also an incidental discovery for, excuse me, an incidental discovery plan that has to make sure that it addresses the purpose and scope, regulatory framework, roles and responsibilities of staff, discovery procedures, an emergency plan, I think Jason can talk more about that, but it's just basically any contact information from people on the site and other things like that. A large generator interconnection agreement, Cole can talk a bit more about that if you have any questions on that front.
Yeah, I'd like to see this one a little bit more specified, because it is a little generic, I mean, there's several agreements we have to make with Pacific Core through the study process. In my mind, an actual application to the utility could fulfill that requirement where they're actively studying the project, because it's such a long process, it's, it's hard to go through that, and then get the CUP, it's kind of something you go kind of at the same time. So I'd say an actual application into Pacific Core to study a project would be a good place to start there personally, because it can take anyone from three to five years to actually get that final agreement with them.
There might be some extensions on recording that CUP, if it takes that. There might be some extensions on recording that CUP, it takes that long to get the agreement.
Yeah.
We might, we might have to change our CUP recording requirements there, right?
And, and where we're at with that is we have all, already been studied by Pacific Core and we're like going through gaps of the final agreement with them. So we're far along that process, but in the future, um, someone else coming to get that, that might be a little difficult.
Perfect. Um, and then finally, a reclamation plan that addresses the following, the closure of the operation, stating the phasing, acreage and duration of the operation, and a financial guarantee for the rehabilitation and reclamation of the site. Now seventeen twelve seventy restoration agreement has, there's discussion between Andrew and Cole. So that's one's a bit more in progress, Cole, you want?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know as the commission wants to differentiate reclamation and the actual, uh, decommissioning of the facility, these two different processes, actually taking the facility down and then coming in and reclaiming the land. In our lease, we have it that we reclaim it to what it was before we started. And, and it's, my goal, I, I see it as a sort of land conservation, forty years out, let's say, go back to farm land. And that's what I'd like to see happen, um, and that's written into our lease, it's also regularly, so we will decommission the land. Um, and the landowner can seek damages if none of these things happen. Uh, we generally put a bond down, I think in this case, we put down a year ten for reclamation of the land, so there will be money available, um, at the end of life of the project to reclaim the land and, um, and it will be decommissioned.
I guess just to add a little bit from the conversations we had, Phil, Richard, and I'm happy to go with the way, but the way it is currently proposed is, hey, you have a financial guarantee for those things we talked about. I think the way it's, as I understand it, they build it into their lease, provided it's done a year ten. Technically, I think that's a financial guarantee, I guess the question that came up is when do you want that financial guarantee? Do you wanna specify that in code anywhere? Do you want, is it okay if it's a year ten, like in this case, 'cause technically that is? Or do you want something a little more concrete, sooner or later, more at the beginning of the process, if that makes sense? So that's, again, not my call, make this a point for consideration, I don't know if anything else you want weighing on that or whatever, that summarize kinda what we had.
Yeah.
Conversation more or less, I, I'd be the way, so.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think year ten is, it's above and beyond where I've seen anywhere else. And the landowner that we negotiated with is really sharing, um, elsewhere I've seen it year fifteen or not at all. Uh, but it's something that, that we like to do there and for that facility to be decommissioned before year ten, it would be like a, kind of thing. I mean, you're talking very expensive facility with financing years and lots of equipment. Um, so I feel like year ten is, is adequate there, um, but it's up to you guys there on that.
So are you looking like ten, fifteen, twenty years life on this?
Uh, so the lease has a thirty-year life with two five-year extensions, so it could be up to forty years, uh, before finally decommissioning the facility.
Okay.
We're long, we're dead.
Yeah? If not close. Okay.
Good stuff.
Now, are you reviewing it with the county council too for questions before it comes back to us, or?
Uh, more than likely, we're gonna try to do is a meeting where two commissioners come in and then two council people come in. We just kinda do, it was almost like the general plan that we did, uh, to something like that, trying to sit down.
I'd kinda like a workshop. As a council, I'd like to hear what the commission has to say, maybe the commission would like to hear what the council has to say.
Yeah, and I thought, I thought that's what we were gonna try to do initially when you came, like, I don't know, when you came the first time, a year ago, or? Yes, that we were gonna try to set one of those up to go over this one or something, potentially pretty big for the county, so that would be good if we can set that up.
Do I just talk to Andrew about that?
Um, talk to Sandy, the chair.
Is that something that I'm present at again, or is that just?
It's a good question.
Wouldn't hurt, I would, that'd be my reaction.
When they set the date up, if you're available.
Sure, no, yeah, according to you, I'd love to be there, um, I can certainly present again if necessary.
When Mr. Bankhead talked about the lease or the life, is that a standard, or is there differences in the term of leases and everything? 'Cause I'm getting back to the ten year, 'cause, um, the minimum is what? That you would lease a piece of ground to put the equipment on?
So generally, we do a development term lease, this can be anywhere, in this case, it's seven years, as we're working through all this. And then as we go into construction, it goes into an extended term, and that's thirty years with two five-year extensions. So it could be up to forty years after the start of construction. And all of the leases on this, in this project are the same, they're all standard.
Yeah, so you typically wouldn't go for less time than that?
No.
Right?
I mean.
It's not.
Yeah, generally PPA's may be shorter, uh, but the life of the facility is usually longer.
Mr. Chair got a vote to extend it.
We got thirty, we got sixty seconds.
Okay. We've heard, we're done.
Yeah, we're good.
We like this, we'll, we'll meet and discuss it more.
All right, thank you. Okay, if nothing else, we'll adjourn.
Looks like number nine can all be talked about at that joint meeting, right?
Yeah.
I like it, we made it out with thirty seconds to go.